Welcome to the March 28, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
Our pledge to lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on closeted additional public carings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. I see no minutes to approve. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, sir, and City Council, good evening. We'd like to have a presentation by our Public Works Director, Mr. Cook, to give council an update on the Osprey Plant Pond fish kill that occurred beginning Wednesday of last week.
Good evening, Mr. Kevin. Appreciate you being here.
As the City Manager mentioned, last Wednesday, we had a report of a fish kill at the pond just outside our Osprey Water Reclamation Facility. So, we began the investigation into and response into that situation. We found that there was a large fish kill, 150 to 200 fish, when we arrived on site. The city immediately dammed off the outfalls to the river from both the pond and any overflow areas along the banks of the pond and the surrounding stormwater infrastructure. We began checking both our SCADA system for flows into the sewer plant to see if there was a drop in flow that would recognize to be a leak within the sewer system. We did not find any. We began visual inspection of all our infrastructure in the area, including the ditches, to see if there's any signs of incoming sewer flow. We also implemented testing on the ponds for both fecal and chloroform. We started that process on the first day. As we progressed into the next day, we got results back that there were fecal and chloroform high numbers in the pond, showed no effect to the river. We did both tested our pond and the river outfall to ensure that they were cleanly separated. The river is dammed on the only outgoing pipe, both incoming and outgoing, both sides. So, we did see that the numbers in the pond increased. We posted signage to the Charadon Mobile Home Community, who shares the pond with the city, and along the river from the Vectorworks Facility through Sandpoint Park, just warning visitors that we were investigating a fish kill and to not just swim in the water at risk. Don't enter the water, basically. So, as a step for us continuing the process of looking for any leaks in our infrastructure, we began damming off a parallel ditch to our twin force mains to see if the ditch would show any signs of sewer leaks. We left those dams in place over the weekend, expecting after three days, we would have seen the water clarity go from clear to murky had they had sewer. Those ditches did not show any concern for the first 1,000 feet. So, beginning this week, we began the process of clearing some additional area to get that berm moved to the end of the ditch, which is along our pond, so that we can visually inspect the rest of the force main this week. So, Stormwater and Field Ops are working on that now, still. We also today started digging a ditch along our force mains to see if we can see any current coming off the force mains. To date, we have not found any infrastructure. The city is leaking at all, so we haven't been able to say that any force main is leaking. The pond flows have been stable. It is dry season, so we're not seeing a lot of fluctuation with I and I from rainfall. We also began pumping yesterday on the ponds. We pulled 180,000 gallons out of the ponds, took them to our Blue Hare and plant, where they'll be stored in an empty treatment facility. We're continuing to truck today. We hope to do that for the duration of this week, which will pull nearly a million gallons off the top of the pond. That also gives us room for stormwater, so we can keep the pond outfalls blocked up for rain events until we can get the testing numbers start to look better. But, as of now, the numbers we've gotten back on the riverside have been below what would be the threshold for DEP for the waterway of that quality for E. coli. So, those are positive for us, that the containments have worked, that we've kept the containment in the pond just off the Osprey Plant. We hope by the end of the week to be able to clear our force main of any issues, and then we're going to do some potholing on our plant itself to make sure the plant doesn't have any issues leaching out underneath. But, we are running out of opportunities for it to be our infrastructure that has leaked. So, just know, we have, we keep a constant eye on the pond itself through testing, even through the weekends. Orange County Labs are testing the pond for us, so they're getting seven-day coverage on testing, and staff is checking all of the precautionary damming measures in place on a daily basis to ensure that the river protection stays in place. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This, obviously, one, and that is, there was a report, or some witnesses who saw the possibility of someone dumping something in there on a Tuesday night, I believe?
Yeah, we heard that from the FWC Fish Call Hotline, was investigating a dumping, and DEP's watch office had been reported dumping.
So, with all the testing you've done, that's kind of a place that we're concerned about, that it could have been dumped in.
Certainly. Our testing efforts are making sure that we're clear.
Absolutely, and they should.
We want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on our side.
But, you are going through the extreme, the nth degree, as you should, to make sure it's not us. But, I wouldn't, I wouldn't not include the fact that we've been, it's been reported to us, and the FWC has running it down, that there was some possibility, I'm using the word possibility, of witnesses who felt like there were some dumping going on in there on a Tuesday night, the lights were seen. Okay, thank you. Remember Nelson?
No, that was what I was going to ask, was about the dumping, because I had understood two, there were some witnesses from two different residents that saw the dumping.
Yes, ma'am. They saw evidence of what they characterize as dumping. I don't know, they witnessed an act. I think they saw what they perceived to be the remnants of, or the entry of, of dumping incident.
Okay.
And I guess all I'm saying, I think that would be part of any report, we're trying to find the answer, because you guys have gone above and beyond trying to see if we had anything to do with it, and you can't find it. So, when the reports are that, hey, we saw somebody dumping over there Tuesday night, and FWC is working on it, it's at least worthy of note. Vice Mayor.
Yes, and the percentage of change between the first test and the last, or the last recent test, what has been the change in the chemicals in the water?
Well, the pond fecal and chloroform are both going down. They went up and then they went down. Obviously, it's a bacteria, so it can grow, so it was expected. It's going to vary, but they have started to come down. The testing takes about 24 hours to get a preliminary result. It takes a few days to finalize, so we haven't gotten much into, I think the last final test we have was technically a Friday test, so we're still waiting for more testing to see how it goes. And, like I said, we take tests both in pond and in river, upstream, downstream, and in the yacht basin that Vectorworks uses, to try to make sure that, you know, if we're seeing 6,000 in the pond and we see less than 100 in the river, we can pretty well say that definitely they're separated. But, yes, the testing is starting to curve downward.
Okay, so I know that it's blocked off and so forth, so there has not been a whole lot of stimulation of the water, or, and no rain to help, you know, help dilute, if you will, the water. So, that the change is going to be slower because of the stagnation of the water.
Yes.
So, as long as we're seeing some type of recovery, if you will, just by evaporation of the water through the heat that we have been experiencing.
Yes, sir, and we started pumping off a pretty substantial hull out rate, so it's, we should start. We pulled downward. It's noticeable the level drop on the pond after yesterday's pumping, so we have seen that that has an effect, because we've been trucking out a pretty hefty amount of water.
All right, thank you. Member Stokel?
Yep. I was just going to echo some comments earlier. I think anytime we see fish kill, a lot of times misinformation will come out there, or what did the city do wrong, or whatnot. So, I think it's important, one, that you guys are going the extra mile, making sure, even though there was this report, making sure there was nothing that was faulty on our end, which I think is good. And then, if we find nothing that is out there, so the public knows. And then, to the Mayor and Member Nelson's point, if there is a report out there, obviously, we don't know whether that's true or not, but I think citizens should know that, so they can get a better understanding. So, oh, a fish kill, oh, what happened? Why is Titusville not investing in infrastructure? Just to be clear, that we are trying to do our best and go above and beyond. So, I appreciate the update.
Anything else from council? Mr. Kevin, I appreciate your report. As always, well done. City Manager?
Onto item 6A, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission and North Brevard Library District Board. Accept the resignation of Titusville Environmental Commission Alternate Member Julie Weaver with a term to expire on 30 November 2023, and request that she be reinstalled as a regular member of the North Brevard Library District Board with an unexpired term to expire on 30 September 2023.
And as I understand it, that's just her desire to get back to or remain on that board. Counsel, any comments on that? I see none. Call the cards.
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
They turned it on. They turned it on.
Thank you. Allow, let me, is that two minutes or three minutes?
Go ahead, you go.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm speaking again as a registered professional engineer, and I've made a number of applications to the TEC, which Ms. Weaver's leaving, and also to PNZ. And I think you should understand, and I think you're all very well aware, is that the city is having difficulty fulfilling the offices of PNZ and TEC. And the reason you're doing this, you're having problems is, for example, as you know, is when I, when I have an application for both of these positions, and right now, is that, is that the city has delayed getting a PNZ member, because I'm the only one who's applied. I'm the only one you got applied. So, it's like, hey, why don't you accept Stan Johnston, Registered Professional Engineer, who has been employed by the city for many years, and who's an expert witness on this, on these matters. So, the problem is, is what, is what the people here just saw a few minutes ago between the meetings. Is what there is, is there's an incredible amount of dissatisfaction and dishonesty by our city government, and there's gag orders on numerous employees.
Stop the clock. Stan, we're not going to, we're not going to wander all over the place. You're going to talk about the person who's coming to move on to from boards and commissions. We're not going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, so you can expect more of this happening, is that people will leave PNZ and TEC, just like Mrs. Weaver's leaving, because this council and this city of Titusville is swimming with dishonesty, and they're fed up with it. And there's liabilities involved in what's going on, as far as like spraying women and children with sewage and so forth and all. It's not funny. And I'm telling the truth, and I shouldn't be whisked away just because I tell the truth. So, expect, just like Mrs. Weaver, people are going to be leaving, and you're going to have a hard time. You're having it right now. You're having difficulty right now.
Stop the clock. First of all, Ms. Weaver wants to be on a specific board, and that's why this is not her leaving the board. So, when you make up stories like that, that she's leaving, she's not upset.
How do you know she's not upset?
I'm not going to discuss that. So, you go ahead and talk about her for another 30 seconds, or we can be done. Start the clock.
Well, you can talk about some other people who left, left these. So, anyhow, TEC is having a difficult time. I'd like you all to listen to them. Thank you. How's that? I cut it short. Thank you. All right.
All right. Any other cards? Counsel, I need a motion on her moving on. Figure out a word for that.
Move to accept the resignation of TEC Member Julie Weaver, and reinstate her to the North Brevard Library District Board.
I second.
I got the motion on the second. Roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. We thank Ms. Weaver for serving on the boards, and she's on the one she wants to be on. Thank you. City Manager?
Petitions and requests.
Petitions or requests from the public. Hold up, Stan.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue, here in Titusville. I wanted to request on behalf of a client of mine, for the council to advise staff to renew the code enforcement lean amnesty program. I have a, my client isn't, has a code enforcement issue, and he's in the process of preparing a site plan so he can correct it. And it just takes a long time these days to get the site plan, but the city staff takes like four months per review currently, so a couple of reviews is eight months. And so, if you want me to go into details about his project, I will, but the main thing is to request that you consider advising staff to extend that amnesty program.
Stop the clock. I thought we did something like that.
You have. Currently, the amnesty program has been extended through April 28, 2023, at which point it will expire, if not extended again. April 28, 2023.
And what are you asking? Go ahead and start the clock. What are you asking?
So, I'm asking that it be extended again.
Pass that.
Yes. It'll probably, we submitted our site plan September last year, got comments the end of the year, first of this year. We've resubmitted. It'll probably be past April before we get comments or approval. So, we're just concerned, and we would like to stop the question.
I would not be opposed to that. I think, as we have discussed this in meeting, that we have not been opposed to that. And I see the April, I think it's the 28th. That sounds good, except I would agree, we would all agree, with, you know, 47 projects on the board, it's taking longer to get them through. I would not be opposed to extending it, although I don't know that this is the place for us to make that movement.
Sure, Mayor, what we could do, as Mr. Honeycutt, is petitioning counsel to bring this item before you, we could bring it before you at your next meeting.
Yeah, I would be for that, if that's how we move that. That's what we do.
Yeah.
But, what, what I wanted to ask was, do you have?
Wait, wait, you're fourth down on the line, but anyway, go ahead.
Oh, fourth? Oh, okay. All right.
Real quick, let me, let me see what they got. Member Nelson?
Well, I thought we had talked about it a couple of meetings ago, and that was sort of the direction that we wanted to go, because we got an email.
Right.
And I think that was from your client.
Yeah. We were expecting it to be on the agenda, and it wasn't, so he asked me to appear tonight. He couldn't make it.
Okay, okay.
Now, we definitely, I've not heard anything, except we wanted to do that. I'm glad you're pointing out the possibility of the need to take it further. I don't know that I knew that. Member Stokel?
Yep. Just to clarify, we have extended it in the past, correct? Okay, I think that's where our confusion is. And then, in my one-on-one, we did discuss that there might be one or two, and we did send out notices that it will be expiring. So, in my one-on-one, because I can't talk to you guys during that part, but I was, I would have been in favor of, if we had some people that there was interest, that we would extend it, because I think our intent is to help people out, to get things in compliance, not to collect money for that. So, I think I would be in favor of it.
Especially with the busy board. Member Cole?
Thank you. Do you have a date in mind as to how much of, I didn't like that look. How much of an extension you think you would require?
No, not for sure. Perhaps the end of the year or something. I don't think it'll take that long, but being safe.
Might, might be easier if we turned around and said, people who are already in that process can finish that process.
I'm open to.
Well, we can discuss that as it comes to us.
Yeah.
At this time, I don't think we need to go open discussion. I think it's come to us, and you can see that we all thought we were moving that way, and kind of glad you pointed out that may need more than the date we gave it. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, if there's any advisement for staff, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to know that, could I hear from staff on this concern?
Yes, sir. You have a petitioner that has requested us to bring this before you, and we can certainly bring it before you.
That's all they're going to, okay. That's what we'll do now, and then, and I think, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Petitions, yeah, petitions request.
Michael Mijack Beachwood Court. I was kind of surprised by Kevin's presentation. I was very glad to hear it, too. But, it gave me pause. Is there a better way that we can test for sewage leaks besides fish kills? I mean, waiting until something happens in the environment and things die, it doesn't seem to be a very proactive way of measuring.
Stop the clock, only because I'm going to, and I'm not going to try to act like I'm the expert. I am not the expert, but I have listened enough in the last week about pressure numbers, force numbers, and that sort of thing. So, Kevin, if you've got two minutes to talk about how the first thing you look at are the numbers and the gauges, and those sort of things could tell you as well, but certainly, we weren't going to ignore a fish kill became very concerning very quick.
Yeah, we do monitor incoming flow. All the metered flow to the plants are monitored. So, if we see a large drop, the SCADA system alerts the operators that there's a, there's a loss of flow incoming to the plant. Likewise, some of the larger lift stations that repump and pump most of the flow to the South Street, the Lime Tree Lift Stations also have flow monitoring on them, so they're checking to see that those flows are reaching the plant, and they're checking for any deviation between the metering. So, that, there is an active warning system. Not to say it can't be improved, but there is a system in place to check for flows. This case, the flow deviations are so minute that they didn't show any, any issue. So, the fish kill was our first warning that the pond had an issue.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm concerned.
Start the clock.
Yeah, the difference, you're looking at the differential pressures between in and out to see if there's a problem, right? Well, the problem is that the difference is so small that we can have a leak that causes fish kills, that we're not going to see in just gross meter differences. I was involved in doing this kind of development out at Kennedy Space Center back in the 90s, when we first put in the internet, back in 1991. I designed the Operations and Checkouts Network Control Center. So, I was responsible for connecting to all the different devices on that 16,000 different devices. And we had to be able to figure out a way to monitor them, to see when something was working or when it wasn't, because you don't want to get a call from the center director that he can't get to his printer, unless you're ready to say, yes, we launched a technician 10 minutes ago, because we saw your bridge was down. You know, you have to meter it properly. And I got a feeling that if we're using fish kills, we've got room for improvement. And that's, that's all I want to say. I think Kevin did a good job. I think we need to do a better job at preventing these things from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Same guy, Stan Johnston. I'm here as a professional engineer and expert witness, and I'm asking the city of Titusville to tell the truth. I'm asking many times to tell the truth. In fact, this, yesterday, I sent an email to all you people, all of you. And here's what the email said, is it says to, please call me, please contact me, because you're not responding to your emails. That includes Mr. Cole. And it says here, number one, it says sewage spills and spraying women, children, and the public with sewage in Sandpoint Park, Space View Park, and recently, it was Senior Center Pond area. That's for you, Mr. Cole. And your incompetence and/or dishonesty on these matters. No response. No response last week? No response the week before that? No response. Because you're afraid of the truth. The truth is, is this dishonesty by your city manager and by council. You're filing false reports. It's a fraud, as far as I can read it, but you just haven't been convicted. So, Mr. Cole had just showed me, because I showed him all these, I sent him all these pictures. He got, he got copies of all these, these red warning notices. And yet, what Mr. Cole does, he denies.
Stop the clock. Stop the clock. You would have talked to council, talked to council. You don't need to talk directly to Mr. Cole. We don't need to go there. Okay, thank you. Start the clock.
Okay, I'm not talking to Mr. Cole. I'm just telling you about what Mr. Cole did. You guys, you guys saw what he did. He, he spoke while I was sitting down and didn't allow me to speak about it. In other words, what he did, he attacked me and accused me of attacking others, personal attacks.
Stop the clock.
He's afraid of the truth.
Stan, this is going to be me and you talking now, because he challenged you on, on what you were saying. You stand up there minutes at a time and speak to the fact that we're, the council, the city manager, whoever else is fraud, telling lies, and we don't jump up and down and scream about it. You say it, we move on. You have your right to your opinion, but you can't, well, I'm going to call it an opinion, because I can tell you, in my case, and these people's cases, not fact. I'm not going to go into all of it. We're not going to get into debate. But, you got, you can't just suddenly say, all of a sudden, somebody said something I said was wrong, and then get off like that. Relax. Move on. Go.
All right, so on October, on, wait, on October 11th and October 25th, at this council, these council meetings, before you, this guy was asked questions and so forth. Did we have the sewage spills? And he said, no.
That's exactly what he said.
And that's not true? That's not true. I've got all kinds of witnesses. I send it all to you guys. You have all witnesses. You've seen, I've sent you these photos. I've sent you the red notices. I've gone to your door. I've gone, I've gone to your church, Mr. Robinson, and you, and I've called, I've talked to you many times to meet with you, and you've never met with me. Mr. Cole has done the same thing. He hasn't returned calls, which I've repeatedly gone, I expect all of you, I know all of you, there's 50, at least 50 calls. None of you have returned. I went to Sarah Stokel's house and gave her one of her brother one of these red notices. And again, what'd she do? She went along, didn't say anything about bad, about Mr. The lies that he's telling. So, the thing is, is you guys are not being honest. You're afraid of the truth. So the thing is, is you guys are not being honest. You're afraid of the truth, and you're, you're liars. And, uh, it's shameful what you're doing, and, uh, uh, you're swimming in dishonesty. And how dare you lie to the people? How dare you lie to these people? How dare you lie to this FDEP? And it's shameful. You're afraid of the truth, and you're swimming in dishonesty. That's what this council, this is what this city's doing.
Thanks.
Do I have another minute?
No, thank you.
Didn't think so.
Uh, petitions request? Alright, um, thank you. City Manager?
Uh, onto consent agenda items A through J. Um, council, do you have any questions of staff for consent? Council, do you want to pull any consent agenda items for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, do you have any cards for consent?
Um, I have two cards. I have one for item A from one individual, and then another individual for item E, G, and I.
Um, Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Okay, please.
Consent agenda item eight A, approve the amendment to the American Rescue Plan Act, subaward agreement between the City of Titusville and North Brevard Charity Sharing Center Incorporated in the redistribution of funds. Consent agenda item eight B, approve the Brevard County Emergency Medical Services Grant Award and Associated Budget Amendment. Consent agenda item eight C, accept the FY twenty-twenty-two annual report for the City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the right-of-way vacation number four, twenty-twenty, extending the request. Consent agenda item eight E, accept the FY twenty-twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report. Consent agenda item eight F, approve the procurement of FY twenty-twenty-two capital outlay budgeted for an F-250 pickup truck. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the contract threshold increase for the Control System Integration Services. Consent agenda item eight H, approve resolution ten dash twenty-twenty-three master lease purchase agreement, line of credit for general fund capital vehicles and equipment. Consent agenda item eight I, accept and approve the engagement of legal services of Bond Counsel Rhonda Bonds, Colin Esquire, and Brian Olive, Bryant Miller Olive Law Firm.
Easy for you to say.
Consent agenda item eight J, authorize the renewal of the auto aid agreement between the Titusville Fire Department and the Brevard County Fire Rescue.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, Clerk, would you call the person with one item first?
Um, Nathan Slusher for item A.
Nathan Slusher at eight-six-zero Allendale Street for the record.
How you doing?
Wonderful. How you doing tonight?
Good one.
Good evening, council. Um, for this item, it was brought to my attention today, and I am, I am concerned, because I know on this item, we have two council members who are directly involved, and we have a third who is indirectly noted on the website for this organization. And I preface this by saying, I love what the North Brevard Charity Sharing Center does. I love the whole program. I've been using it with my family for many years, and I wish it to continue for many years. On any normal day or in, in, in any normal situation, I would simply ask that the person, if anyone is involved, would just abstain from the vote. However, in this scenario, I do believe that would violate quorum, and there would be no vote. So I simply ask if we could explain to the public what this is, and it's, just because it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. So if we could please just explain what this is and what the grant, uh, I know it's an amendment for the ARPA grant. If we can explain why it's came back and then going back out again, that would.
You do know he's returning it, that they're not accepting it. That's due to return unexpected funds, unexpended some funds.
And then it's redistributing it.
City Manager, do you want to go ahead and clarify that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure, I, I, if you, you, do you understand that the, uh, Brevard Charity Sharing Center has decided not to accept that?
That would be wonderful. I'm okay with that. That's awesome.
City Manager?
I was just asking for clarification.
I can try, okay. So when we distributed this, this money, organizations, nonprofits specifically had to meet certain criteria. If you take a grant, normally there's criteria. They decided they did not want to take this grant. They initially wanted it. Now they cannot meet the criteria. So because of that, rather than taking it and maybe not meeting the criteria, they are giving it back. So then it will go back to us to distribute as if we had those ARPA funds, again, the same manner that we have.
So it's not being redistributed today?
No, no.
That's the question. That's the answer. Thank you.
We are, we are making the redistribution towards affordable housing. We just haven't.
So, go ahead, please.
Sure, you bet.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Dr. Stokoe.
Because I think that I was named in those three people that didn't have the right to vote, and I'm gonna make sure that that's clear, because that's not true, okay?
There's a little bit of that out there sometimes, that not true stuff.
Alright.
Go ahead, please explain.
Yes, so just to reiterate what Member Stokoe said, is yes, the agency is returning the funds due to administrative reasons, and staff is requesting council to reallocate those funds tonight at this meeting.
And the reallocation goes towards affordable housing.
Right.
Okay, there you go. But it's not going redistributed to them in any sort of way.
It's redistributed, got it. I understand. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. It's much appreciated for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Clerk, next card?
Stan Johnston.
Got me coughing on that one. Thank you, sir, very much. Uh, council, any comments or anything? Uh, otherwise, we can go to the motion.
Newt?
Go ahead.
Oh, go. Well, you go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that, uh, we approve the consent items listed A through J. Make the motion that they be approved.
Second.
Got a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager?
Onto quasi judicial, the, uh, city attorney will read quasi judicial procedures.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerks, has all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth? And for staff and applicant, please ensure that all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised? In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, we'll make sure the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed. And again, I would advise, uh, with regard to ex parte, we can do that on a item-by-item basis. You don't have to try and disclose, you know, all of them right now, but as each item comes up, you could disclose at that time.
Is it, well, on this one, is this where we want to say on this one?
Yeah.
I, I've had no contact.
Yeah, I haven't had, just the same as I think before. I just have driven by the place, but no contact.
I haven't been by that place in probably three, six months.
No contact.
Vice Mayor?
No contact.
No contact on this one?
The Plating and Zoning Commission considered this item out their eight February twenty-twenty-three meeting. The commission recommended denial of the CUP application number seven, twenty-twenty-two, due to concerns with the location of the playground near Barna Avenue. The vote was five zero. This item was tabled at, by the city council at their twenty-eighth February twenty-twenty-three regular meeting. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to relocate a playground on the existing private school located at one-one-eight, one-eight-eight-one Knox McCray Drive. The CUP is required for schools in the Community Commercial Zoning District per section twenty-eight-two, uh, fifty-five. CUP one dash, uh, twenty-seventeen was approved on the site to allow the school. The subject property contains fourteen point two-one-four plus or minus acres and continues to be used as a school. The applicant is requesting to relocate the playground in order to accommodate a multifamily development on the western portion of the site, separate application. The future land use designation on the portion of the property used for the school is commercial, high intensity, and the zoning district is community, uh, community commercial. Mr. Parrish is here to present to you and answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parrish, got us on a little bit here with this interesting one.
So since your last meeting there, um, well, I'm not just gonna refer you to page four sixty-three of your packet, so you can look at that concept plan that was discussed at last meeting. And if you remember, there were some changes that the applicant had proposed as far as the location of where that, uh, playground was gonna be. It's actually gonna be located where that retention area is. So it's like flipping them around in the presentation they gave you. The applicant has a presentation they'd like to give to you tonight. Since your last meeting, we've also learned that they're proposing to add bollards on the sidewalk and also a second egress from the playground. So the applicant is here to, uh, give their presentation and answer any further questions about this.
Okay, applicant. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Dwayne Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant, attorney with the law firm, Danae Misco and Backman, office is at fourteen Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton. If you recall, I was last before you on February the twenty-eighth, and the item was tabled, uh, this specific item, but I had three items. One was the rezoning from the community commercial to the multifamily high-density residential, which was approved. And then the second one was the companion land use amendment to change the land use from commercial high-intensity to high-density residential. As you know, your land use and your zoning maps have to match as well as your, uh, regulations. So we were able to accomplish that last time, and then we just tabled it, uh, with respect to the conditional use permit, so. A brief refresher, the property is located on the south side of, of Knox McCray Drive, uh, just west of, uh, Barna Avenue. You can see it's designated there in the yellow. It's approximately three point seven-nine acres, and it's part of a larger shopping center. The portion in the yellow box is part of the proposed future residential development, and then the shopping center as a whole is about fourteen point two acres. This is a zoom in, so you can see in the area that we're, uh, proposing to amend, it's currently vacant. And on the south side of that is an existing retention area. On the top nor, uh, northeast side of it is existing parking spaces. And then, uh, you can see the arrow that shows where the existing playground is. Um, as part of the previously approved, uh, CUP, that's where the playground was proposed, and we're asking to relocate that. Here are a few pictures so you can see the existing conditions. The top picture is a view from Knox McCray Drive, looking southeast into the property. And the bottom one is a view from Knox McCray Drive, looking southwest into the property. Uh, this one, existing conditions on the top, this is a view from the driveway entrance on Knox McCray Drive, looking southwest into the property. And then the bottom picture is a, a view of the existing playground, and that's from the western drive aisle of the parking lot, also looking southeast, but further into the property. As staff stated, the specific request is to, uh, allow for a conditional use permit to amend the previously approved, uh, CUP, which was number one dash twenty-seventeen, uh, and to remove all elements of the approved CUP for the school from that residential portion, that three point seven-nine acre portion, uh, of the subject property, and obviously allows for us to relocate the playground to the new location to accommodate the residential development. So this is a picture. Um, this is something that we showed you last time. However, we did update it, and I believe I will answer all the questions that I remember from last time. But just to reorient you, Knox McCray Drive is on the top, which is the north. And then on the left side of the west side is that proposed three point seven-nine acre piece, which will be the multifamily residential district, which is now rezoned to the R-three zoning district. Um, and then, uh, you can also see the designation of that existing playground. The blue port, and that's all the yellow portion. The blue portion on the bottom is the shopping center, the entire area of the shopping center, which, uh, is approximately seventy-five thousand square feet. And then, and that major portion is the daycare you can see kind of in the middle. And then the lighter blue on the north side of the daycare is the designated parking. As required by your code, we have to have sixty-two spaces, uh, and you can see we have way more than that, but we're just showing you the specific area where this school or daycare would park. And then, um, the green area on the right side or the east side is the proposed new location of the playground. With that, as staff stated, uh, in working with, uh, your staff, we did, uh, propose additional bollards on that sidewalk area to make sure that the, um, that the staff and the students can get safely from the daycare to the new playground location. Uh, Mayor, I believe you asked what the distance was between the daycare and the playground area. It's approximately three hundred and seventy-eight feet. And then, if you look at the distance between the playground area and Barna Avenue, it's just over a hundred feet. So I think that's sufficient safe distance. And then as you, as you know, Barna kind of curves a little bit as it heads south, um, that area is still about forty feet on the southern component. And then the area between, or the distance between the southern portion of the playground area and the, uh, drive aisle for the student pickup in the future is approximately forty-five feet. So that far exceeds any setbacks that the city would have, uh, for areas like this. We are still proposing the six-foot-high wall around the entire playground area. Um, and, and what you see on the bottom, those, um, kind of arrows that run around, as now, it just operates as a daycare. So as you can imagine, the kids are younger, so the parents park in the front and walk their kids into the facility. And then at pickup, they park in the front, and they walk in and pick up the kids. But as, as we discussed last, uh, last time, we are looking to expand this into a school, maybe K-five. And at that time, we would integrate the pickup area, which you see in the red arrows on the backside, um, to still have, uh, the balance and no conflict with the daycare that takes care, uh, that takes place in the front side. Also, we did integrate, uh, a second location. So you can see in the green area, the playground, the red boxes, those are the proposed, um, locations for the entry and exit of the playground. So good news, as, as we talked last time, I think it was clear, at least my position was, in support of your staff and the staff recommendation of approval, that we had satisfied all the legal requirements. But I think we also all agreed that it was more than that. Not only was it the legal requirements and your code requirements, but it was the communication requirements and the safety requirements. I'm happy to report that our ownership team has had, uh, significant communication and conversations with the owner of the daycare facility, who's Mr. Jenkins. Um, I also had to put my eyes on him, so I asked for a meeting. We had a Zoom meeting where, uh, we, I went through this site plan. I asked him what his needs were, what his concerns were, and what we needed to do to address those concerns. Uh, he had some very good, uh, positive feedback. One thing that he said that we didn't know is, as a daycare facility, the, whoever his regulatory authority requires certain access points to and from the playground. So that's why we added the second access point, because he said that was necessary for his, uh, requirements and the regulation of the use of the playground for, for the daycare. Uh, we also talked about the bollards, the distances, um, the wall buffer. He was, uh, wanted to make sure we had, uh, total security of the play area, which we are providing now. So he's here. I, I asked him to be here, because I thought if he wasn't, you would think I had him tied up in a basement somewhere. But, uh, so he's here, and I'm sure he will speak for himself. But, uh, we are very pleased with the communication that we've had with him. Um, as we talked about, of course, your code requires a community outreach meeting, but we wanted direct outreach to the main stakeholder, and we've had an opportunity to do that. So we're very pleased. I hope he will come forward and tell you he's very pleased with where we are as well. And we covered all the big stuff. And the last few things that I'll say is, uh, so I promised you the outreach and the communication, and I've, uh, delivered on that. I also discussed with you the lift station issues. If you recall, there was a lift station issue. I'm happy to report that the lift station is one hundred percent repaired now, and it's fully independent and operational. So hopefully, uh, we won't have any issues, uh, with that moving forward, so that, that's great news. Um, so like I said, we, we support staff's recommendation of approval, and I hope you will agree that we've now not only satisfied the code and the legal requirements, will agree that we've now not only satisfied the code and the legal requirements, but also the community outreach, the stakeholder outreach and the, um, and making sure that the, the playground is safe. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and, and thank you so much for your time.
All right, real quick, the, um, entire shopping plaza is going to become a school?
N- no, sir. Uh, we expect the daycare facility and, and Mr. Jenkins may be having the ability to grow and have some more space, but, um, I don't think it's going to get to the point of the entire plaza being a school. Uh, but we just wanted to make sure that their opportunity for him to grow is there and that's what we're working towards.
All right, so, and you kind of had it over there on the other picture with the blue, but I'm looking at four sixty-three, which is green and it's, um, one-story block, public shopping center. We know that Publix isn't there anymore. That's where the Legacy Academy is.
Yeah.
Or was. And the proposed student drop-off and pickup, that goes all the way to the east side of the plaza. If I didn't know better and didn't ask that question, it looks to me like the whole thing is, uh, school because there's a lot of empty buildings where you have proposed student drop-off. I don't know if, if that's making sense to you, but where it says proposed student drop-off in the green and pickup route. And maybe that's just, um, and, and meaning something else, but that looks like the, the whole thing there. So that's really neither here nor there. We can move through that, but I was just wondering if that's what you're going to do with that area there. Behind, uh, the proposed student drop-off thing, I see a retention area. Tell me about that.
Yeah, so, um, if I may, you want me to comment on the first point?
Well, you go with the first point.
Yes, sir.
Um, that, that's, you know, yeah, that'd be very interesting because at least by picture, it looks like it's one long school because you wouldn't have the drop-off, student drop-off on the far east side if that wasn't part of the school.
Yeah, so the potential growth proposal would be that to be the stack area and as you, as you know, with your long history with schools, you want to have as much stack area onsite so it's not impacting offsite rights of way and everything. So the pickup area would be proposed to be on the left side of where this school would be or the daycare on that backside, but just the arrows just show the amount of stacking that would be available so that it can all stack onsite and not impact adjacent rights of way. So there wouldn't be multiple pickup and drop-off areas along that way. There would be a centralized drop-off and pickup area, but that would just be the ability for multiple vehicles to stack.
All right, this might be way out in front because obviously if the school itself is on the far west side, you wouldn't want the proposed drop-off site to be on the far east side, but they'll let the faculty and staff deal with that.
Yeah, and if you see, I, I don't know if you can see, do you mind, um, sir, if I can have? Eye in the sky? All right, great, thank you. Perfect, yeah, that one's perfect. So if you can see, there, there's a, just the red box on the left side of the back portion of the daycare, that would be the centralized pickup and drop-off area for this school. The other red arrows would just be stacking, but not pickup and drop-off areas.
Okay, and, and that, well, let me go, where you don't show it up there, but right behind the green between, uh, just to the left of the playground and to the right of what says one-story block address, uh, there's a big blue retention area on my, and I'm trying to figure out why that's there because that's asphalt right now, unless I'm just looking at this different.
Yeah, I believe that's showing designated as an existing retention area, which we would maintain.
That's correct. There's a existing retention area back there.
All right, well then let me move to the red arrow that you put as the pa- path for the parents to pick up their kids. We have the proposed playground area right there next to that entryway, which is an entryway. Um, like I said, I'm very familiar with that. I was at that school. Um, that's, I, I'm assuming there's going to be a wall around the play area.
Yes, sir. That is a, a correct assumption.
Because obviously that gets to be a pretty busy and unrestricted area. It's not like we have a lot of police officers sitting out there at this entryway in the back of the building. So that's, that's a concern, but you, you've addressed it with the wall and I'm not going to jump up and down on that, but I just wanted to be, make sure everybody's aware that that is the entryway and that you've even got it for the pickup for the parents. So that's going to get to be quite a few cars coming through there at some point, uh, when kids might be on the playground. Okay, uh, Member Nelson.
So you have some bollards up front?
Yes.
Uh, it looks like in front of where the school is?
Yes.
Are the bollards going all the way down that sidewalk?
Yes, Councilwoman, that's the plan that the bollards would go, um, from the daycare to the entrance of the play, of the playground.
And how far apart would they be?
Uh, we'll work with your staff as part of this process. As you know, the site plan comes later for the multifamily residential piece and we will work with your staff on appropriate spacing. Uh, I think there's industry standard there. Of course, the goal is to prevent a vehicle from getting in there. So we need to make sure that they're spaced consistent to where, where they would stop a vehicle from entering onto the sidewalk. And so we'll make sure we'll work with your professional staff and, and any industry requirements to get that done.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, um, I guess my question would be is if you guys had any more concrete plans for this space because it's just kind of feeling to me that like it made sense when we did the CUP for the playground because we had the school there, we had children coming in and they wanted a playground, so it made sense. Now it just feels like your main focus is this multifamily and that playground's in the way, so you're just kind of throwing it over here and there's not real clear vision for this space. I think, and Mayor was bringing up a couple of points, like the drop-off area just seems like, I don't know how that would make sense. And then there's future playground area, like I'm not seeing like a vision for this space or how this playground fits into what your hope is. And we're just trying to be like, okay, we just need to have a playground and we need to move the playground, so we're just going to throw it here. That's how it's feeling.
If I may respond, Mayor?
Yes, please.
So as, as you know, some of this is a little bit the cart before the horse right now.
Yeah.
But today I'll tell you, there's a daycare operating today and we have a very safe plan for how the students of the daycare would get to the playground and back from the playground and are fully protected. If this area grows and the school grows, we have to come back and work with the city to get those additional approvals to expand the school area. So that, the playground that you're approving this evening and the CUP is for school slash, slash the daycare that's operating and that will allow that to happen. But if the school is to expand and we would need additional business tax receipts or licensing and occupational approvals and so forth like that. So if we come with that, we'd have to show you that plan of expansion and we'd have to show you how it's done properly and safely and we'd work with your staff to do that. So, um, I, you know, we're kind of showing you what the future could hold, but we'd have to come back before you to accomplish those future plans and growth.
Okay, but would that be accurate where that is kind of, I think the next plan is the multifamily that is planning to be proposed and then depending on how that is then, but for the time being, this is probably going to stay kind of stagnant?
That, well, we hope it continues to grow and, and I'm sure as you've seen and I saw some of your presentations earlier, when you have this level of significant investment into a property, it usually spurs, uh, others, not only within this property, but adjacent to also, um, work towards, you know, upgrading their properties. And as part of this, we talked last time, beautification plans, upgrading the asphalt and the landscaping and all these other components that would come with this approval. Um, but the first step, to your point, is the multifamily component and the daycare that's operating today and the playground that we believe we've shown is safe for the daycare operations. And as we grow in the future, uh, we will make sure that those plans are, those future plans are reviewed by your competent staff and done properly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from, uh, council right now for the applicant? All right, go ahead and have a seat and we will, uh, call cards.
Urban Jenkins?
I was hoping his card was first. Urban Jenkins, sixteen oh five North Carpenter Road, Titusville. Um, yeah, I'm the only other, basically step-by-step early learning center and, and I was, you know, very pleased that they reached out to me, you know, not only once but twice and they were very accommodating with the, you know, with the concerns I had about the playground. Um, and to my satisfaction, everything looks really good, you know, you know, they put the safety first. It's a little farther, but they did put the safety first and suggestions I put, I, they accommodated and I really appreciate that.
Counsel, any questions? I see none, thank you very much. Next card.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer and expert witness, but in this time I am not an expert witness on this issue, so don't misunderstand in understanding. But, uh, so on this cross-sagittural item, I, I am not, uh, uh, speaking about the issues on it so much, but I thank, thank the, uh, council and I did it at the last meeting we had this, that, uh, I thought that you did the right thing to, uh, to table the, the matter. And it took, we took, I think we took over half an hour at that last meeting.
More.
Just on this, this one, maybe more like about forty minutes.
Yep.
And, uh, so thank you for doing what you did, especially Mr. Diesel. I thought you did a very good job.
That, that time, okay? One time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook? Um, any other cards? Applicant, you can come on back up. This, oh, yeah, you gonna have questions?
No, just, just.
Okay. Um, I don't have any more questions. I'm pleased to hear the conversation and the, um, discussion you've obviously had with the school owner. Uh, I won't say, and again, I, I actually was, as, as you know, I was actually principal at this facility for a few months and very awkward place to have a school, very difficult sometimes. Um, you know, we, we sometimes had our playground or play area between the two buildings on asphalt.
Yes, sir.
Very different. And sometimes you just got to make it work. Um, I do think that you've made an effort on the playground safety. I'm concerned about the distance, but I will also say, and I think you pointed it out last time, uh, and I drove back to remind myself of a few things, as it is now, you have to do a great job of being safe because you walk across, uh, the parking lot road that goes behind the building. So, uh, here you at least would not be walking across the road. So, um, if there's anything else you want to add, feel free.
No, uh, no, sir. I just want to say thank you, uh, to your staff and, um, you know, we're excited about this opportunity. We hopefully, we hope that it will show growth in this area and others around us will be excited and, and look at, uh, upgrading their properties as well.
Thank you and I appreciate your communication.
Yes, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, the motion for approval. Based on the evidence presented, I move that the, that to approve the rezoning.
No, this is a conditional use permit.
Say again?
This is a conditional use permit.
This, this is a CUP.
This is, this is a U P?
Yes, conditional use permit.
Condition of, okay, condition of use permit. Um, condition of use permit number, uh, seven two zero two two at eighteen eighty-one Knox McCray Drive. Finding that the, uh, request satisfied the approval criteria in section thirty-four dash seventy-six of the Land Development Regulation with the following condition as we've talked about. They brought your answers back and, uh, I think that it should be pretty.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Cole.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote, if I could just clarify, so the motion and the second is to accept the conditional use permit as presented by the applicant tonight, that concept plan that was shown to you.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you for the communication. Thank you, sir, for being here today.
Onto item, uh, nine B, which is small scale number five, twenty twenty-two, which contains ordinance number seventeen, twenty twenty-three and ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-three. The city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Yes, Council, this is the second reading and public hearing of small-scale amendment number five, twenty twenty-two. Ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-three, which I'll read, is the land use, uh, ordinance and ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-three, it will be the rezoning ordinance. Ordinance number seventeen, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending that ordinance number sixty dash nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville, by amending the future land use map, by changing the land use designation on a three point three one plus or minus acre portion of property located southeast of Interstate ninety-five and State Road four oh six, Garden Street interchange, having Brevard County parcel ID number twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash A T dash one dash fourteen and twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash A T dash sixteen dash one, from conservation future land use designation to commercial high-intensity future land use designation, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-seven dash nineteen ninety-seven of the City of Titusville, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by changing the open space and recreation O R zoning district to the regional commercial R C zoning district on a three point three one plus or minus acre portion of property located southeast of Interstate ninety-five and State Road four oh six, Garden Street interchange, Titusville, Florida, Brevard County parcel ID number twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash A T dash one dash fourteen and twenty-one dash thirty-five dash thirty-one dash A T dash sixteen dash one, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their eight March twenty twenty-three meeting. Um, they voted seven zero on the future land use, changing the land use from conservation land use to commercial high-intensity and they approved the rezoning from open space recreational to regional commercial, seven zero. The applicant, Kim Rosinka, on behalf of the property owner, Greg Nelson, is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezone on approximately three point three one acres of land located southeast of I ninety-five and State Road four oh six, Garden Street Exchange. Request is to change the city's comprehensive plan, future land use designation from conservation to commercial high-intensity and rezone the same portion of the property from open space and recreation zoning district to regional commercial. Mr. Parrish is here to present to you and answer any questions that you may have on this, your final public hearing on this request.
So the public hearing, uh, I'll just summarize what is presented here. The findings and recommendations as far as this consistency with the comprehensive plan, we believe it is consistent with the comprehensive plan based on what has been submitted to us. Specifically, the portion of the property subject to this request contains wetlands and a water body that is less than five acres. To address the comprehensive plan policies, specifically Conservation Element Strategy one point six point three point two, the applicant submitted an environmental report and an email from the Saint John's River Water Management District stating that various portions of the onsite wetlands may be scored accordingly to their standards. And though, that email and that report is on page five forty-six and five forty-eight of your packet, and so we believe that's enough, that's the evidence that the applicant has provided to help address that particular strategy of the comprehensive plan and other policies of the comprehensive plan. In addition, can, uh, we're asking for you to consider approval of the comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment from the conservation land use to the commercial high-intensity land use category on the portion of the overall property as illustrated and described in the land use ordinance and as consistent with the comprehensive plan and more specifically with Conservation Element Strategy one point six point three point two. Also, approve the rezoning of the open space and recreation zoning district to the regional commercial zoning district as proposed on the portion of the overall property as described in the rezoning ordinances as consistent with the commercial high-intensity future land use category of the comp plan and rezoning criteria described in section thirty-four dash forty of the Land Development Regulations. We believe that the rezoning is consistent with those criteria if the land use, of course, is approved. I believe you're familiar with this property. I'm just going to point you to page five twenty-eight of your packet and you'll see the future land use first, existing land use versus, uh, proposed land use and you'll see the difference that if this is approved.
What number is that, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, five thirty of your packet. So if you look at that map, it shows two maps side by side. You have the existing land use and the proposed land use. So if this land use ordinance is approved, you'll see that area, that, that blob there that's illustrated in green, that's the conservation land use, that'll be replaced with the surrounding commercial high-intensity land use. And then the zoning will also change as well underneath that. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have about this application. Um, the applicant is also here to answer any questions. is also here to answer any questions.
And is this where we point out if anybody quasi judicial?
Yes, sir, at this point, you could mention the ex parte communications.
Through the process, I believe I had a email from Ms. Ruzinka, and I believe we had a phone call, but it was, both were simply to say, do you have any questions? So, no, it didn't change anything. Anybody else?
Yes, same here, I had a conversation with the attorney, and it was just asking if I had any questions.
Same, she wanted to know if I had received the material.
Same, I got an email and I just responded that I didn't have any questions.
Again, I was left out, nobody called me.
Anyway, so it comes down to, I do believe the contact that I'm hearing and with myself was just, do you have any questions? And it did not affect my.
It did not impact my decision.
Right, I just had one question, you mentioned the materi, asked if you received the material, what material did you receive?
Environmental report.
I believe, was it the information that had been provided to plan and zoning?
Sorry about that. Yeah, yeah. And it was in my package.
Okay, we ready to go? Miss, Member Stokel?
Yes, okay, I just have a few questions that you may or may not know. One, do you know why it was zoned, or the land use was that way initially, and the way it is currently with that land use? Can people build? I think the surrounding conservation, it's a weird piece how the conservation is just like right in the middle like that, I just would like to know a little bit of the history on that, if you have it, if not, it's okay, I can go to my second question.
Sure, if, I believe I tried to provide some background on page five seventeen and five eighteen of your packet, bottom of the staff report, and the next page subsequent doesn't give much of a background, other than that, how the property's been used, that apparently where this green, or this conservation land use and this OR zoning is currently located, is the general location of where burrow pits or mines were located, according to the applicant. The property was zoned, or land use and zoning was placed on this property in the early nineties, with the citywide adoption of the comprehensive plan and land use categories and the citywide rezoning. And from what I understand, anything that had potential wetlands on there, according to the National Wetland Inventory maps that were available at that time, were immediately changed into this conservation land use.
Okay.
And so this is one of those cases where the comprehensive plan and the zoning, or the code rather, also says that the applicant can verify where that actual boundary is and adjust the boundaries of this, but also if the, and if it's five acres or more, and then have to designate some area that's five acres or more as conservation, or try to attempt to preserve it. In this case, this area is actually less than that five acres, so there are other policies that address this scenario where, do you have the ability to use the property? Is it viable, what's the functional classification of the wetlands? So they did provide evidence in the packet related to that, as far as their conversation with Saint Johns Water Management District and a report, and then it looks like they also provided to you separately another environmental report related to this.
So when that happened, we didn't really know the impact of it, if somebody wanted to develop, we just had to put that land use on it at that time, so?
Yeah, it just was, a lot of properties were zoned, or the category, the land use categories placed on there with the, with the underlying zoning on there, based on the information that was available at that time. And then, there's a process in the comp plan and the code to allow people to make changes to that, and this is one of those processes.
Okay, and then, if this were to get approved, they would still have to go through Saint Johns and follow proper mitigation?
Yes.
And then, my last question is, if it were to change over to commercial high intensity, do you happen to know what the open space requirement would be for that?
The, I believe, it is regional commercial zoning, it does not have a minimum open space requirement for commercial development.
Okay, that is all, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you good?
Yeah.
All right, I see nothing else from council. Staff, anything else you want to add while we move forward?
No, sir.
Okay, applicant? Come on up.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Mr. Robinson, I sent you two emails.
Yeah, I know you sent me the email.
Okay.
That's why I said, you know, we have a great spot.
Okay, thank you. And I do have the P and Z packets, if anyone else needs another one, did you receive that, Mr. Robinson? Okay, okay, all right, thank you. So, that was presented, I just wanted to make sure everyone had it, because it makes the presentation flow much easier when you have that availability. Ms. Stokel, I remember that, from the staff report and from your comp plan and from your ordinances, that that was administratively placed in nineteen eighty-eight, the comp plan, and then the zoning was placed based upon the fact that it looked like a wetland from the National Wetlands map. It was also changed in nineteen ninety-seven based upon the ordinance, but I don't know what that nineteen ninety-seven zoning ordinance was, but that's what we're changing, hopefully with the new ordinance. Again, sorry, my name is Kim Ruzinka, I'm here on behalf of the applicant Greg Nelson. With me is Greg Nelson, also John Shepherd with Atlantic Environmental, and Rodney Honeycutt. Both of their resumes are in your application package, or your planning and zoning package, to show that they are experts, and they will be testifying and answering questions as an expert. I know in the past, I've seen you actually qualify them, I'm not asking you to do that, perhaps at the end, if that's necessary, but I think they're mostly fact-based, and they can explain what they've done. If you need the expert testimony, I believe the expertise is shown there in their resumes. There are a lot of numbers in this case, some of them seem inconsistent, but they're not, this has been a process. First, we had to get the wetlands flagged, then we had to get a surveyor out there, so when this process started, the numbers given by the environmentalists are not the same that were in the survey. So I'm gonna try to use numbers now that may be inconsistent with your staff report, but that's because this has been an almost three-year process to get to where we are today. So, as you've heard, this request started to change the future land use from conservation to commercial high intensity, and the zoning of open space and recreation to regional commercial on three point three one acres of land, that's by the survey that's in your packet that was referenced by Mr. Parrish. This three point three one acres is surrounded by the same future land use and zoning, as you've seen, also by the diagrams that were presented, that were shown to you again by Mr. Parrish. This three point three one acres is on two separate parcel, there's an eastern parcel and a western parcel. The eastern parcel is two point three six acres, and it has a nineteen sixty-two built home that Mr. Nelson actually grew up in, and then there's the western parcel that's eight point seven nine acres, that is mostly commercial but has this pond and wetland on it as well, so this transverses two parcels. Both abut Garden Street, and they only have one entrance for the two parcels, and that is to the east of the Shell Station, and it's a driveway that comes in and goes around the house, and also accesses the vacant commercial property that has the wetland and the pond. If you look at the package on page one, and it just still says P and Z packet, that is a Google photograph that shows very well the driveway that I've just discussed, that comes in off Garden Street and traverses to the east, and to the house, and it shows the pond and the wetland, it's obviously got some vegetation on there as well, and it shows the Shell Station. It also shows, there's quite a bit of FDOT land along this property that was taken for expansion, so that's why there's that indent there. Mr. Nelson also owns the property to the south of what you're seeing on page one, it's about twenty-eight plus or minus acres of single-family residential, that currently has no direct access either from Garden Street or from any other paved road. There's an old right-of-way that could never be used that goes from the property to the east and its wetlands, so the idea is if, if we can fix this lake and pond, so it can be filled partially or wholly, so access can come to the property, that access can also be used for the single-family residential property to the, to the south. So, on page two and page three, those are just the property detail sheets, so you have the property's information, the parcel IDs are the same as what in the application, and the two point three six, number two, is the eastern, and the eight point seven nine acres is the western parcel.
Real quick, can I have a hard copy of it, actually? Because I'm going back and forth between the agenda packet and. Thank you.
A little bit about this history, Mr. Nelson's father, Mr. Edward Nelson, purchased these properties from the state of Florida in nineteen forty-nine and nineteen fifty-one, and started Nelson Concrete Business. It was under full operation years before President John F. Kennedy said we were going to go to the moon, which was in nineteen sixty-two. Edward Nelson sold the concrete business to Rinker Concrete Products in October of nineteen sixty-two. The Nelson Home said was also built in nineteen sixty-two, and that's the house that's referenced on that page. Mr. Nelson grew up watching the concrete trucks from his backyard. By the time Rinker bought the concrete business, the Nelson's business had supplied all of the older subdivisions with concrete foundations and concrete blocks for the walls. All of the older schools, bridges, and pioneer foundations for rocket train buildings at the Cape Canaveral Rocket Complex were built with sand for the Nelson property that we are discussing here today. If you look at page four, that is a picture from the early fifties, which was the beginning of the, the concrete business. This is where they were actually pulling the sand out for the concrete business, and that is what has now become the pond and with the wetland features. And I know I'm saying it wrong, but Mr. Shepherd will correct me. On page five, that is a pictures from nineteen sixty, sixty-one, and these are pictures from Mr. Nelson's family stock of pictures. That is the house as it was being built, and it shows the pond. Page six is an article from the Star Advocate from May of nineteen sixty-seven, again showing that same pond and lake, and you'll see this is clearly a man-made lake that has now taken on wetland features, and this is talking about, the water has dipped because of not enough rain. Looking at page seven, this is from your future land use map, and again, you can see where that green is, is what we're attempting to change, and it also doesn't show the extent of it as the surveys do, but it does show that there is, there is access being blocked because of proximity to the Shell Station, the proximity to the east property line. The reasons for this request today for the small scale amendment or the rezoning are several. First, to create consistency in the land use and zoning, to allow the development of the eleven point six eight acres as commercial, to allow appropriate access to the commercial property from Garden Street that is not currently available because of the Shell Station, and to allow access to the twenty-eight acres of single-family residential to the south. The twenty-eight acres is not before you tonight, and it is intended to stay single-family residential. This will add three point three one acres of commercial lands to the city inventory, I have been here a number of times in the past two years, and you are losing your commercial inventory to multifamily, so this is going back the other way, and this will allow this to be built up. This concrete burrow pit has been filled in since the sixties, and this land has not been used for anything since the nineteen sixties because of the improper access. Page eight is the requested zoning. This is from your zoning and future land use map, but the parcel, the two point three six acre parcel is also RC. It doesn't quite show it here, but your package does show that, the one provided by Mr. Parrish. There's no development plan, there's no specific development proposed, this is just to allow the development that can occur to occur. There's no developer that has a plan to combine these parcels, to put anything particular on it, and there's no developer for the twenty-eight acres to the south. The primary person, purpose is to allow this eleven point, eleven plus or minus acres to be developed. Neither your comp plan nor your ordinance require a specific use. Generally, I know you have a specific use when zoning's come before you, but neither your code nor comp plan nor Florida law requires it. Florida law, case law states, a city's zoning ordinances control the uses to which a particular piece of land or property may be put. The planning board therefore is not to be concerned with a particular use of a piece of property as long as it fits within the permitted use of the city's zoning ordinance. By the fact that zoning is surrounding this parcel, shows that this is the appropriate zoning for this parcel. If you look at page nine, this is from the environmental report prepared by Mr. Shepherd. And it, again, I've drawn in the lines where the parcels is, but that clearly shows the house and how close that pond and vegetation is to the east side. In fact, if you go out there with a measuring tape, it is twelve feet from the edge of the property line to the edge of the bank, so that driveway is very narrow along the east side. Same from the corner of the Shell Station property to the water from the pond and the vegetation, that is about thirty-five feet. And Mr. Honeycutt will explain to you that FDOT will not allow an access to this property from the west side of the Shell Station, and this is, would be controlled mostly by FDOT as well as the city standards. There was a community meeting on January thirteenth at the Titusville Public Library, forty-nine invitations were sent out, about fifteen people attended, the future land use map, this picture on page nine was shown, and the survey. The questions were regarding the filling of the lake, the location of the road that would go into this property, site drainage, reasons for the request, traffic concerns, and protected animals on the site. As I said, we've just, we displayed these documents and answered questions, several of them asked for the full environmental report by Mr. Shepherd, and I did send that to them via email. At planning and zoning, several members of the public spoke against this request, again, they were concerned about location of entrance, traffic, safety, construction noise, and stormwater. All of these issues are site plan issues and not issues for rezoning or comp plan. Mr. Honeycutt's resume was sent to you, it was on page twelve of the package that was emailed to you, I didn't print it again, I didn't want to kill any more trees, and Mr. Shepherd will speak next, his resume is at page twenty-one, and he will provide expert testimony as well, and answer any question you have about the wetlands, the functionality, and anything else related to wetlands and the related flora and fauna. If you don't have questions for me now, I'd like to turn it over to.
Member Stokel?
To Honeycutt.
Yep, I just have two questions. What, I think you said it, what is this piece, what is that property, or what's happening in that?
There's nothing happening right now, that's actually zone commercial right now.
That's what I feel like, is that a commercial building, or is that a house?
It's a house, but it's a commercial zoning.
So why, how did they get a house on the commercial zoning, or was it?
It's been there since nineteen sixty.
Nonconforming, I guess?
It was sixty-two, before your zoning code came into play.
Okay, and then my other question is, during this process, have, have you guys discussed or looked at maybe not changing the land use for the whole conservation and just part of it?
No, we haven't, because Mr. Nelson is not the ultimate developer, and so the conservation isn't necessary because it's not more than five acres, it's not all wetlands either, it was a man-made pond, so.
Okay.
In general circumstances, you can fill in a man-made pond because it's existed so long, it's taken on characteristics of a wetland, because it's so big, and again, that's a, that's a Mr. Shepherd question, that's just what I know from scratching the surface. Yes.
Yes, the only thing, as I've looked at these, the whole, we'll call it a lake, is not gonna be filled, is it, it's just enough to make a pathway through it?
We don't know. We don't know, because Mr. Nelson's not the ultimate developer, but the fact is, it's surrounded by commercial. It, it is, if there weren't a pond there, it would be commercial, if it hadn't been administratively zoned back in either ninety-seven or ninety-three or whenever, it would still have the commercial, but because it was a pond, because there were trees around there, someone at the time at the city said, we're gonna make this OR, and I guess we could probably go and search records, maybe find them, but it wasn't anything the owner did, it was done to the property by a National Wetlands map from nineteen eighty-eight.
I have, and Mr. Nelson is here?
Yes, he's here.
I have, I have one question, this is off the, that car that is sitting in the, in the dust there, in the, from the construction dust, is that an Oldsmobile? Okay, I just wanted to know, I just wanted to see if it was, I was wondering if it was an Oldsmobile, Oldsmobile. Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, go ahead and call your next presenter up.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Good evening again, Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. Just some facts about the site. The location is excellent for regional commercial. It's the intersection of I-95 and one of our two major arteries into the city. And then, as Ms. Rosanka mentioned, due to the limited access point for I-95, the only area to access the property is east of the service station that's there. I have a map, if you're interested, I can show you where the limit of access is.
Thank you, sir.
So, due to the fact that you can only access the point east of that service station, the site is really not accessible with the lake being there. There's not enough room on either side, and if you've also been by the site, it drops off several feet from the road, and so the area will need to be filled. Filling the pond will allow development of this site. Without it, it'll be, it's not possible to develop it. A big advantage to fill in this pond is it's in the area of critical concern. In the area of critical concern, you're not allowed to have a wet pond. The reason being, you lose water through evaporation. And it's considerable in this area, you know how humid it is, that's because all the water leaves all our water bodies. And so when this site is developed, if the pond is filled, there will not be a wet pond on this site because it's not allowed in the area of critical concern. And that means the area of critical concern where our water in the city is obtained, a large, a good portion of it, is in the superficial aquifer, and therefore it'll be feeding it instead of letting some of the water evaporate. So that's one advantage. And so, any off-site drainage that goes through this site, when the site is developed, it will have to be handled. And it'll have to be handled in at least a good manner as it is now. It will not have to be treated, but it will have to be passed through the site, so there's no issues that were not there before. So, I'm asking that you approve the rezoning and the comp plan amendment. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Any questions? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person for applicant?
Hello, I'm John Shepherd with Land Environmental, 657 Montreal Ave, Melbourne. I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the environmental side of things. I think that the take-home message, from my standpoint, is that this 3.31 acres is actually a man-made pond. And so although it was set forth as a conservation area, in your code, it's a man-made water body. And it's also, Kim, Ms. Rosanka called it a pond with wetland features. I think she said that really well, in the fact that if you have a man-made water body or a water body at all that's over an acre, St. John's will look at that area and say that it has some well and function. So in this particular case, I met out with St. John's in October of 2020, and we looked at this pond, and we graded it. I won't bore you with all the details, but in the end, in your package, it shows that the northern lobe, the 1.1 acres of this man-made pond, is approximately 40% functionality. So if you had an optimal system, that was 100% pristine system, this is 40% of that, which equates to a minimal functionality. And then the southern 2.21 acres of this system was graded by St. John's as approximately 53% functionality. Other than that, we will be doing the mitigation, and you asked that question earlier. St. John's will require mitigation of us, and so we'll be purchasing mitigation credits to offset any impact to the surface water. And on that, I'm here for questions, if you have any.
Member Stokoe.
Yeah, either for you or staff, I'm not an environmentalist, so this is, some of this is new to me. I just, I'm confused because I feel like most of our development that we've been having, like a stormwater pond or some type of pond, is typically required. And then I'm hearing that there was probably, we don't want any type of wet, like pond here at all. So I don't know how that makes sense of that, I guess.
I believe Mr. Honeycutt was saying, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rodney, is that in this particular case, we'll need to create a dry stormwater pond, or dry stormwater feature to collect that stormwater.
Is that correct? I just haven't seen one of those lately, I guess, so it's, I'm still trying to learn some of this stuff.
Sure, there's certain, well, two large areas of the city that are inside the area of critical concern, and one of the stipulations or development standards is that you must create dry retention ponds as part of your stormwater system. So we won't accept wet retention.
Okay, and that's good for the environment as well as the ACC?
As far as I know, it's good for the well-filled areas, for the ACC.
Okay, all right.
Member Nelson?
Since we have you up here. Explain to us the importance of wetlands.
Okay, well, wetlands in the ecosystem provide habitat for animals, birds, all kinds of wildlife. And then also, they provide filtering for stormwater. I think I want to make the point, though, again, that this is not a wetland. And that's critical in this situation.
You can talk, if you want me to come up here. What, let me interrupt here, because I'm going to say that. What makes you say it's not a wetland, and I'm not an expert either?
Sure, it was a man-made excavated area. I believe it was excavated in the late 50s, early 60s. And so currently, it has very steep banks and standing water in it. So it's basically a pond. So St. John's River Water Management District would call that a surface water due to those steep banks and open water.
Okay, go ahead, Member Nelson.
I just have you here, so I have to ask all these questions. So, we've been talking a lot about wetlands because we're mitigating wetlands. Developers want to come in, you know, they want these parcels that has wetlands on them, so they're doing mitigation. And is it more important to have a wetland bank out of our area, or is it more important to have a wetland area in our area? Do you follow me?
So, I guess I'll look towards the experts, which is St. John's in this case. And the Water Management District has come up with certain basin areas. And those basin areas have mitigation banks within them. And what their rules say is if you impact a wetland within a certain basin, you have to mitigate within that same basin, that same area.
Okay.
So a lot of times, those basins are really dictated by where the drainage is going. So it's hard to say Titusville is its own drainage basin because the city limits don't necessarily equate to where the water is draining. So I think, to your point, we do currently do mitigation within the basins that are dictated by the district.
And our basin goes from where to where?
This basin, it's actually up into Volusia County, I believe, and then down to, I believe, 520. I can sort of get you maps showing you where the basin lines are.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosanka, are you done back there? Okay, so we've called the applicant and all their folks. All right, so now, we call the cards.
Donna Sauerlin?
Call the cards.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Donna Sauerlin, I live on Fair Glen, which is the neighborhood that is directly behind this housing area, this area. My concern, I have two concerns. One concern is the pond, when they fill it, if they fill it, after hurricanes, lots of rain, that pond actually goes up to the property line of the other people that are on Fair Glen, and it's into some of their properties. When they fill that, where is that water going to go? Our street already floods at the end of Fair Glen from other housing areas being built, the water coming in from other areas. Where's that water going to go? Is it going to flood the homes that are on the verge of not flooding now, but they're right there at their front doors? My other concern is the amount of accidents that they have on Garden Street, right there under 95. You put more commercial into that area, you're building up more traffic. You have the school on the other side of 95, you have our housing. We already have a difficult time getting out of our neighborhood. So you're going to increase the traffic flow, you're going to increase the water flow. That water has to go somewhere. Also, the traffic situations. There are a number of accidents right there at 95 and Garden Street. What, when they go to build in there, they put, I understand this used to be commercial property, but Titusville was not that well-built at that time. You've got housing on the other side of 95 that they're building. You have more people moving into Titusville, so now you're going to increase that area with the traffic. Those were just two of the major concerns I had with it.
Very good, I got them. Anybody else? Thank you. Next card.
George Sauerlin.
Good evening, folks.
Hey, how are you?
Good. My name is George Sauerlin, 63 Fair Glen Drive. My concerns are basically the same as my wife's. I would like to address the man with the environmental study. Has anything been?
Talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry, has anything been said about where the water will go if the pond is filled in, if that is built up to the height of Garden Street? Because I'm not sure if you guys can see it on ears, it drops down several feet. If they build that up, our neighborhood is going to be six, eight feet lower. Have they addressed where the water from that place is going to go? And like, nobody knows what's going to be built there, but if it's an industrial and it's commercial, chances are, it's going to be all asphalt and/or concrete with buildings above the neighborhood that we all live in. And there's a lot of people up here concerned about that because over the years where they're building and closing off the wetlands behind it, that is what's pushing the water up to the bottom of our street. And the more development that comes, I know we've got to, as a city, move forward and develop. I mean, that's the only way we're going to grow, but in the meantime, you're hurting your neighborhoods, people. The water comes up, it keeps getting higher and higher. It's just in the past seven years, we would have the storms, you didn't see it on the street. It's coming up people's houses now because of the encroachment on the south side of the wetland. But that's our concern, that's my concern, and we, you know, that's why we're here.
Appreciate it.
Well, no, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, thank you. Next card.
Nathan Slusher.
Pass.
Beth Sharon, is C-H-A-R-R-O-N?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Beth Sharon, and I live at 22 Fair Glen Drive. We've lived there with my family for about 19 years, and we lived in Titusville community for about 50 years. So my concerns are the same as my neighbors, right? First and foremost is the flooding. Fair Glen is flooding, right? So we get storms, it floods from the swamp all over to our streets and to our yards, right? And you'll probably hear from another neighbor who, our ground is so saturated that the, there, a big oak tree fell into their house with the last storm. So it is getting very dangerous for us. My mother, who lives on the town place, which is her backyard backs into Fair Glen, she floods every time it storms now. Her backyard is like a sponge, right? And so we have no drainage plan. We have none, and our concern is valid when you take a look at that pond. It's flooding with the pond. You fill that pond in, where's that rain going to go? It's going to go right into Fair Glen that are flooding already. And the second topic is the traffic. So we live at a very, very busy street. We have people coming in from 95, we have two gas stations, a hotel, Dunkin' Donuts, and two schools, right? It is busy, they come rearing over the hill, they're coming around the corner from the public shopping center, right? I feel like I'm taking my life in my own hands trying to get out of our neighborhood. It's extremely, it has a very high residential activity with the current surrounding communities that we have, and then also the new ones that they're building to the west. And then with the two schools, you have kids walking back and forth to school. No crosswalks, there's only two crosswalks by 95, and that's it. And so when I see kids in the middle of the road trying to either go to school or come home, I'm terrified because it is such a dangerous place. And to think that we're going to add another commercial access point to this area, I don't know. I do remember that there was an action from the last planning and zoning to talk to the Florida Department of Transportation to start doing a analysis of some sort for a traffic impact. So I don't know if they had reached out to the Florida Department, but I think it needs to be done. And I think this vote may be somewhat premature until we get some of those analysis back to see what impact it's going to be. Because it is a very dangerous stretch of Garden Street. And like one of the neighbors has said, there are numerous accidents there, and I don't want anybody to lose a life. So in closing, I would like for you, before you make this vote, to go and visit this property, right? This property has one little entrance, and it has one road that goes down, and you can see by the pictures, but the picture doesn't do it justice. It's not a little, you know, square piece of property that you can build, I'm sorry, can I go? A commercial building on, right? It is 12 feet from actually our backyard and several houses, this pond is. So that is very concerning. And the amount of fill that you would need, the magnitude of this project is huge. So I'd ask that you would take a look at this property to see it for yourself before you make your decision moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next card.
Denise Meadows.
I know this one.
Hi, my name is Denise Meadows. I'm speaking on behalf of the Pierce Family Trust, who owns the lot in the back end of Fair Glen Drive. And it floods every heavy rain. And we currently, actually, it's interesting, my brother called me and told me about this meeting, that I just signed another contract to put the lot back on the market after we dug out the pond that's on our property to help with some of the flooding. But with this last storm, it flooded to the point that the lot looked like a lake. It looked like a lake, I mean, you would have expected. And I had solar panels with a pump put on the pond, and it was up on a platform, and you can't even see, you couldn't even see the platform in the pictures because there was so much water on the lot. And there's also a drainage, a storm drainage that has been neglected. And there's also a, a drainage, a storm drainage that has been neglected over the years, that is not properly draining into the wetlands that are behind. So, right now, we have a proposed build, but it is considered a flood zone, and, and the lot is back on the market, so I, that, for the trust, it's kinda hard for me to, without even knowing what's gonna be built on this property, and how it's gonna affect, that's gonna have a bearing on whether or not I'm even able to sell this property. And, so what is the plan for the stormwater runoff, if, if you allow them to fill in this, this pond? Because already, like you said, it's, the lot that we have is flooded every time you get a heavy rain. It doesn't have to be a hurricane, it can just be a, a heavy rain. So, that's my biggest concern in being able to sell this piece of property for the trust. Thank you.
Real, real quick, what was that property, Pierce?
Pierce Family Trust.
And is that where compared to Fair Glenn?
If you, either way you go around Fair Glenn, it's the lot at the furthest back.
Furthest east?
South.
South, okay.
Oh yeah, here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I got that one already. All right ma'am, thank you. Next card, please.
Matthew Howell.
Hello, my name is Matthew Howell. I live at 30 Fair Glenn Drive. My property butts up against, we actually share a property line with Mr. Nelson. Like all of the neighbors are saying, the biggest thing is, what happens whenever you fill in the pond? He has big equipment, he's already cleared a bunch of the forest off the side, who's to say, once you rezone that property to commercial, who's to say he doesn't push all that debris into the pond itself, to get rid of it? Because he has no purpose for it, it's just sitting there, he's already knocked down a bunch of trees. If you drive by the property, you can see it, you see it from 95. When my wife and I bought the house two years ago, you couldn't see 95. The traffic noise was minimal. Now, you can hear it, it's a lot noisier. You can see, you can see the vehicles going across 95. We don't know if he's pulled permits or not. Code enforcement, I know, has been out, they knocked on my door to access my backyard for an investigation. I don't know what the results were of that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything I do.
Uh, next card, please.
Okay, I'm gonna give this a shot. Quentin Fizer?
Fizer.
Fizer, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi.
I am Quentin Fizer of 10 Fair Glenn Drive. I am also here because I am concerned about the water coming off of the adjoining property, when they fill in the pond. I know this should be addressed when they're building on it, but I'd like to make it a matter of public record that we are concerned. I have a photo here on my phone, may I approach?
Yeah, come up and let me see that. Similar to, what, what?
This is a photo of Fair, 39 Fair Glenn Drive.
Is that the road?
Yes, looking south. They gotta see it too, here, here, here. That is standing in the front yard of 39 Fair Glenn Drive, looking south over Fair Glenn. Fair Glenn is a box, we are at the corner, looking south towards Denise? Her lot, and as you can see, the road has been completely covered. This was seven days out from Ian completely passing us, and I have been working lawn maintenance for eight years now, and I can remember time back in 2016, I don't remember the name of the storm, but it flooded worse back then. The resident of 39, the water was up to her, almost up to her garage door, completely covered the driveway of the one I just showed you. And, that is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
You have some people from the public showing you photographs or evidence that's on a phone, but we don't have that as a reference.
And I, and I, and I get that, and we can certainly share it with whoever, especially the applicant. I mean, it, it's picture. So, do you want, you want me to close my eyes, or what?
No, sir, I think we could just ask the applicant, the people from the public, to share that with us, if they can email that to us.
And in all fairness to him, I think it was a last second thought, so, feel free to share, feel free to send it via email, that's fine with me. Obviously, I'd like to have all the evidence I can, I'd like to see everything that I can, and I don't wanna limit it, because you don't have it. Now, if you need to have it, let's get it to you. Right? All right, next card.
Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo Tropic Street. I just wanted to point out that this wetland is less than five acres, and, and now it's being disparaged as being man-made. Since when is being man-made such a bad thing? Especially when it takes on the characteristics of something natural and native, and evidently quite helpful to these other people who are learning the consequences of infilling wetlands and building residential areas where water should be left to flow free. I wanna point out that even though this is a three and a, three and a third acre, and the law says, it's gotta be five acres, this area is part of a whole chain of wetlands. It's this plot that we're talking about, as though it's not connected to the plots next to it, and land beyond it where the water flows and where the wetlands are. And I wanna point out that it is, you know, an area of critical concern, is that what we're calling it? And think about the big subdivision that they just cleared across the road, you know? That was a big wetland too, and I think that probably contributes to a lot of the problems that people are having. And I just wanna, I just wanna point out that we have prided ourselves on being the gateway to nature, and we're allowing all these changes. It bothers me that we can change our comprehensive future land use, which was set aside to be open space and recreational, and now we're gonna just change it to commercial because, because we can. We shouldn't be able to, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Steve Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Steve Hall, I lived at 27 Fair Glenn Drive, my mother still lives there, so I'm talking on their behalf. Most of them, you know, were talking to you emotional, but, and, and the attorney's gonna say, this is what we're dealing with right now. Well, what we're dealing with right now impacts what we have to deal with in the future. And the proposal that, that Mr. Nelson is talking about, he has stated that he wants to develop this land, okay? It also has where he wants to impact and go to the 28 acres of residential area behind the property. So all this water, if we mitigate in different locations, without taking care of the runoff in these impacted areas, we're just, Fair Glenn's just gonna get flooded. You have Sorrento that was built, you have the areas on Swan Lake that was built up, you know, where their retention ponds, which are man-made, increased to, to take care of the water flow? You know, we've talked about traffic, I mean, you guys have been there. Traffic is really bad coming through there, and I can tell you the speed, the speeds that people are going, it's not 40 miles an hour. The berm going from, from Garden Street down to the property is not just a few feet, it's, it's probably 12 to 14 feet. So where does this all take place? You know, I don't wanna get blindsided by the need for commercial real estate in Titusville. We all like to see it grow, we wanna see Titusville prosper, but we wanna see it prosper in the, in the correct fashion, where it doesn't destroy residential areas. This area on Garden Street is predominantly all residential now. You know, again, and, and one of the ladies made sense, this is a retention pond now, you know? So what's wrong with that? So, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Bill Young.
Hello, I'm Bill Young, 612 Indian River Avenue. I throw rocks at this building from my house, I mean, I can, but I don't. Because sometimes I'm up here. If you notice, I'm from the T E C. Okay, so we have a lot of issues that we put forth, and talk about, and make decisions and recommendations, and I find it interesting how you're caught between these people and that guy. Okay, so that's part of your job, I guess, as is part of my job. I, I think I remember swimming in that pond when I was seven years old, because I've been in Florida since 1953. And, and I used to live at South Lake Village there, because beyond Singleton, there was nothing at that time. So what I wanna talk about is, you mentioned there was 47 projects that the few people haven't gotten to? Is, is that like this, this project here?
I don't even wanna comment on that, I can't say they haven't gotten to them, I just say that, that we're getting a lot more projects than we've ever had before.
Oh, so we have a giant development boom, boom coming on, and we're looking at our conservation easements, what to do about them, and our ponds and so forth. So you're really stuck between a hard place and someplace else, so, so I'd like to mention that you need to, development may not be the best thing for you, because all the decisions that the people before you made, so in 1962, was it, that they did this? In 1962, somebody made a decision that these people now are flooded, okay? So, you need to think out of the box, and as you're asking questions, what does that really mean, a conservation easement? So that's what I'm asking you now, because you may wanna change the motto of Titusville from space and buildings, from space and nature, take nature out, because if you're gonna do away with all these things, you're not promoting nature. And if you're not having the nature, then you're gonna make an, you know, I don't really wanna live in New York City, okay? New York City is not the place for me. Even though they have Central Park, it's just a big concrete thing. So, so you need to understand and think out of the box, of how can I make this, make him happy, but yet, these people happy, in modifying the approach? So maybe he missed, has to make adjustments, and the city has to take on something to deal with the water problem for these people, because it's not necessarily all their problem, if the city is gonna provide city services, okay? So you provide storm drainage, maybe there's requests should be for storm drainage. Okay, so think out of the box, that's what I'm asking.
Well said. Uh, next card.
Melinda Roberts.
Hello, I'm Melinda Roberts, and I'm in Fair Glenn. I'm next to the lady's property where it was a lake. So we lost a tree. Fortunately, it was a neighbor, we didn't get the one on the house, ours got the pole and some other damage. But very spongy, and the water came up almost to the house, and it covered our back part of the yard already. So, and if this man-made lake is only working at 40%, what if we lose that 40%? I mean, where's it gonna go to then? And I thought that when we purchased the property, for the price that we did, that that land was wetlands? And like, we used to, couldn't even hardly hear 95 or see it. Well, since he's ripped out those trees, we see all the semis going by. So, I mean, you're looking at property values, what about, how are they going to, when you were talking about getting industrial in neighborhoods, and doing one without destroying the other? So how do you do the industrial without destroying our neighborhood, our house prices, flooding our streets and our houses? Because we have, now we can see the traffic. If they build something back there, there are houses that literally go up to, it would be right there, I mean, in their backyard. And so how do you keep that beautiful? So we've got the flooding, you've got the traffic, and now we see 95. So, how are these going to be addressed? Because so far, no one has appeased my mind that our neighborhood will not suffer greatly.
I have a question. Yeah? What year were most of the houses built in for the Fair Glenn, or if anybody knows, in that neighborhood? The 60s? Okay. And then, questions for staff, I don't know if you know, I know some of the neighborhoods in, within the city limits are located in flood zone areas, do we know if their neighborhood is considered a flood zone area?
I'd have to look at it, but, I mean, while everybody's speaking.
Okay, okay.
The site, the plat does show some curb on the street, or some gutter, but I don't know where it all drains to, so we'll have to look at whatever was proven.
Okay. So then that would be a question I would have as well, also, if it doesn't, it floods more, then are we gonna now be paying for flood insurance? I mean, I just don't wanna destroy, it's not okay to destroy our homes. I want him to have his good stuff, but not at our price.
Gotcha. Vice Mayor, hold up.
Yes, I know someone said that they've been here a long time, and the housing only used to go to Singleton, that was the residential area. What year was that, that area of 95 completed? Because 95 is high. Anybody know? The year 95 was completed in that, that area.
Late 60s.
It late, it was the late 60s, early 70s when it came to the...
The one house that's adjacent to the lot that we just sold, because my brother owned that too, the back end of that house is actually one of the old beach houses.
Hold up, if you're gonna answer a question, come up here so you can get on the microphone.
Am I done then? Yeah. The house that's right next to the lot, that's the lake, the back end of that house is actually one of the old beach houses that used to be out on the Cape, when they bought the property and started building it up. The engineer that built that house on, at 38 Fair Glenn, had that beach house moved from the beach to the house and attached it to the back end of that house. So, yeah, that was the old Henderson home. Yeah, so...
I live next to one like that too, that came from the beach, as a matter of fact, they put it in sideways. It's not even, it's not even...
Yeah, it has, it has its own entrance and everything on the backside of the house by the pool. But yeah, that, that's how old.
Yeah.
That neighborhood is.
All right, thank you so very much.
Okay, next card.
Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Is that the last card?
One more.
Okay.
The last one is Bud, it's P-O-R-T-A-L-Z, I believe.
Greg Nelson knows me for all life, since 1965.
Give your name and address, please.
Bob Porta, 26 Fair Glenn Drive, Titusville, Florida.
There you go.
Known Greg Nelson our whole life since 1965, it's always been called Nelson's Lake. And back in the day, you could waterski all the way in the front part of that house, where you see, waterski from there, all the way back around a little island in the back part and come back out. When the hurricanes came, it would flood all the way up to that swimming pool, because I lived in 22 Fair Glenn Drive when my parents moved us here, and that water would flood all the way up to our back porch. So, it's always been Nelson's Lake, and we cannot have it filled in, because it will flood, flood, flood. That's all I had to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that the last card? All right, applicants.
Good evening again, Kim Rosenka, representing Greg Nelson. Many of my comments have been in consultation with the engineer, and you may have specific questions for the engineer, Mr. Shepherd, anytime you wanna bring them up, that is fine with me as well. The main concerns are the pond flooding, the traffic, and, well, the lake and the flooding, and, and please don't interrupt me, I didn't interrupt you. The, as you well know, these are all site plan issues. Your land...
Your land development code requires that new development can't impact old development. So any historical water that goes onto this property will have to be accounted for. This is also in the area of critical concern. We can only have forty percent impervious, forty percent concrete. Most areas have eighty percent concrete. So they will have to accommodate any water that is displaced. And that's an engineering issue and a site plan issue. What everyone seems to miss is there are already eight acres of existing commercial there that they can't be accessed. So that's a detriment to moving forward with commercial. And in fact, because they can't access it, it's useless. Regarding traffic, a traffic study will be required, again, at site plan. F D O T will be involved, the city will be involved, and if improvements are needed, the developer will have to pay for it. Again, as I pointed out to you, there is room for expansion. That's why F D O T took that from the Nelson property. Again, the Nelsons purchased this in nineteen forty-nine and nineteen fifty. There was no zoning code, there was no comprehensive plan. This was applied to the property after they purchased. They didn't buy it knowing it was wetlands. That's not the facts. This is, Fair Glenn is an old subdivision. There's no stormwater management on this property. One lady said that there is a storm drain there that's obviously neglected. So someone has responsibility for that storm drain to do what it can, whether it's an H O A, whether it's a St. John's permit, we don't know, but that's not our development. That's the Fair Glenn development. What is the plan for stormwater? Again, that is a site plan issue. There was comments about trees being taken down on the Nelson property. There have been fires on this property set by transients. There has been a lot of people... I'm not saying, I don't know all of it, but this is what Mr. Nelson has told me, is that some of these, there have been fires and transit that have had to been removed, and Mr. Nelson has worked with T P D to help remove some of the transients. If it's a code enforcement issue, that's a code enforcement issue, which apparently is being looked at, and it's not a zoning issue. Regarding the flooding, flooding happens during hurricanes. The hurricanes are getting worse, and flooding is getting worse. Again, this is...
Let's get quiet back there, okay?
Again, this is something that, when you have these four hundred, there's five hundred year storm...
Stop, timeout. We're going to get quiet back there, okay? All right, we're good. Thank you, go.
When you have these five hundred year storm events, where some of these hurricanes have been, water does accumulate, but they have to get the stormwater moving as it should. According to Mr. Honeycutt, this pond has not been used for stormwater because it has no stormwater outfall. It's not a stormwater pond. Even the last minute spoke that says even that pond floods when it rains. So if that is removed to allow for access to this property, to allow for all of it to be commercial, that water will still have to retain somewhere. So it's not, the removal of this pond is not going to impact the flooding, because the flooding has to be main, any water has to be maintained. And again, these are engineering and site plan issues. And an engineer will have to calculate the stormwater collection now, the stormwater drainage now, and make sure it doesn't change. This is a commercial area. This is a commercial gateway. We're changing this, we're asking to change it for very valid reasons regarding access and regarding the use of the property. Mr. Parrish has stated, both personally here tonight and in your staff report, that this meets the comprehensive plan and it meets your land development regulations. If there are high speeds on the roadway on Garden Street, that needs to be addressed by your police. It's not a Nelson issue. This is a retention, they say it's a retention pond. It's the Nelson pond. It's private property. If it needs to be used for public use, that's a whole different thing. But this is Mr. Nelson's private property that has been in his family since nineteen forty-nine and nineteen fifty. I do not understand that the lake is at forty percent. It's a forty percent impervious standard, and I believe Ms. Roberts was overhearing Mr. Honeycutt and I speaking. So there's no forty percent standard for this lake. It's forty percent impervious. As to seeing ninety-five, again, that's not a zoning issue. That could be a F D O T issue if the noise is too great. It could be a fencing issue when the commercial development is created. To repeat and to sum, Mr. Parrish has said this consistent with your comp plan. It's consistent with policy one point six point three point two, that this small-scale amendment meets the elements of the comprehensive plan and complies with the procedural requirements of the zoning ordinance. The need for this comp plan and zoning is due to the insufficient access for the western parcel and the eastern parcel. And to get access to the twenty-eight acre parcels of the south, every property is allowed to have access. These three parcels do not have proper access. This is a man-made lake. It's not functional to the extent that it's usable, as Mr. Shepherd has explained and is in your staff report as to functionality. And it's not a connected wetland, and it's not a five-acre wetland. The U M A M scores of three, four, and six are less than minimal to less than optimal, so they are not good and functional wetlands. A property owner is entitled to have his property zoned based upon zoning concepts without regard to a particular use. A zoning authority's insistence on considering the owner's specific use of a parcel of land constitutes not zoning, but direct governmental control of the actual use of each parcel of land, which is inconsistent with the constitutional guarantees of private property rights. And that's from the Fifth District Court of Appeal. You all also have adopted the private property rights element of your comprehensive plan. We would ask that you approve the small-scale amendment, including the comp plan ordinance and the rezoning ordinance, to allow this to be rezoned and comp plan changed for three point three one acres.
Any questions? You have an engineer back there that can talk to me about the water?
Yes, sir. Mr. Honeycutt?
Hello, sir, yes. Give me an idea. The concern clearly is greatly about, we fill that up, where's the water going to go? So that's a problem. I mean, that's a concern.
So that pond doesn't serve as an area to keep the subdivision from flooding. The big area, there's a big swamp to the south of this site, and that's where all the water goes. And when that swamp fills up, then it floods their area. This pond doesn't act as any kind of retention for that subdivision.
Member Nelson.
So I guess it's more for Brad. How do we keep Fair Glenn from flooding?
I mean, the evidence I can take... It's, I'm not sure I understand the question. How do we keep us an adjacent? We're assuming that the flooding and drainage from Fair Glenn, that the pond on Mr. Greg Nelson's property is serving the drainage requirements for Fair Glenn?
I'm not assuming that, but I'm sort of like, it sounds like Fair Glenn, and I'm pretty well acquainted with Fair Glenn, but Fair Glenn has always been, when it rains, squishy. As a kid, that's why I would say, squishy. You walk across the lawns, and it was... It was wet. So I'm sort of like wondering, one, if by doing this, are we going to make that worse? And then, secondly, what do we do in the future to make sure that their property isn't flooding? Whether or not it has to do with announcement property.
There are two things I heard this evening. One is that, you know, historic drainage, you have to maintain that so that Mr. Greg Nelson or a future developer of the property develops a property has to retain their own flooding and whatever's happening on that property, so they can't make things worse.
Okay.
The other thing I heard, too, was that there's a potential, from one of the residents of Fair Glenn, was that there's a stormwater system that apparently is not, may not be maintained. I don't know who maintains it. I'm not sure. I saw on aerials that there is a pond, it looks like, on one of the larger properties at the south end of Fair Glenn. I don't know if that's particularly part of a particular drainage system for that subdivision, but... What I'm trying to get at is that there was some discussion about what could be maintained or what is not being maintained. So it's a whole separate issue for that subdivision.
Yeah.
So...
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I think a lot of this...
I understand they're two separate issues.
A lot of the specifics and questions that I'm hearing won't really be answered until we see a site development proposal, because at that time is when you review the engineering drawings to see where plans that will address a lot of these drainage and flooding issues that have to meet our code requirements and even state requirements, especially in the flood, in the area of critical concern. It's very stringent in that area, so it's going to be a challenge.
So basically, no matter what we do tonight, even if we approve it, there are still hurdles, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, next question, and this isn't for Rodney, it's for the lady back there. Is there an H O A? You don't have to run. Were they responsible for that stormwater system? Okay. Get together.
All right, Vice Mayor. Yes, I know that this is a... Once you get a ball rolling, it's hard downhill. It's hard to stop it. And is there anything in historical precedence on a piece of property that even though it hasn't been, we know that this, the flooding hasn't been documented officially anywhere that we can see, but is there any, as we make our decisions, is there any historical precedent that we can set? And we have witnesses that will testify, if you will, that this property, this lake has been there for as long as I've been living, basically, and that we can grow, I know that we are limited based on the things that we can do, because it's the owner's property. But is there any historical precedent because something has been a certain way for so many years, and nothing has been really done to take care of it or to address it, that we can look to see if we can find answers to help the concerns for the flooding? I know that was a lot.
Yeah, I think I'd have to get back with you, because I think your question, let me see if I understand your question. It has to do with historical drainage patterns.
That's correct.
This is something you probably want to ask maybe the applicant, Rodney Honeycutt, since he's already addressed partly this question related to the, or even Kim Rosenka's already addressed it, from what I heard, where you can't make things worse than it already is. So when they, if Mr. Greg Nelson or a future property owner develops a property, they're going to have to address that if I flood going on their property and not make things worse. They're going to have to compensate for whatever they're improving on there as well. I think that's what you're trying to...
I understand that you can't make things, but if it hasn't been documented that it is worse, how are you going, what grounds do they have to stand on to say that you're making it worse? Because it's never been documented that it's bad. So how, as this ball start, comes down this hill, what do they stand on? Because, yes, you can't make it worse, but show me the documentation where it was worse. That's my question, because that's why we have to have some historical documentation. I believe it's somewhere that says, over the years, the last fifty years, this has been this way. Yet it hasn't been officially dressed by the county nor the city. And, but we are living with this problem, and if we go in and do this, it has the potential to make the problem worse. But you're saying, well, when you get through the different phases of this process, they cannot make it any worse, but we have no documentation that it was worse. That's my concern. We have, but I know the legal ramifications of what we are limited to doing, but because I'm afraid that once this ball start rolling, it's going to be hard to stop. It's going to be hard to stop if we don't have any grounds to stand on that the gentleman, and I don't see his face, said that he used to go swimming when he was six years old. That was before ninety-five, and I know a lot of things have changed. And the high rises, the hills and so forth, has pushed that water farther and further to flow north as things, rain comes. But at some point, it had to be documented that this is going to be a problem. And I know that we need to address that, but I know that we have issues with addressing it because the owner's legal rights. And historic, that's why I ask for historical evidence that exists, that we can at least slow the ball down for just a little bit so that we can get a better look at it.
Member Sockel.
Yeah, the vice mayor brings up kind of my concern is, what kind of accountability do we have? We say that we have these rules in place that it won't make it worse, but they go through our process. We say they meet it, and then stuff happens. And I say this because now that I've been on council for some time, I feel like this has happened with other neighborhoods. There's a neighborhood off of Hickory Hills that has horrible flooding issues. There's another neighborhood talking about squishy. I went door-to-door there, and I was like, it hasn't even rained, and there, it's squishy. Like, I get pictures all the time, and I'm like, okay, I'm assuming councils prior made the same decision. Well, we were guaranteed it won't impact and make this worse, but here we are. That's my concern. I feel like if we could feel confident that things won't be impacted to this level, maybe we could work something out, but I have concerns that we can't guarantee that. And to the vice mayor's point, we're not documenting, we don't know, and then say it does make it worse. What do we do? Rip it all up and... That's my hesitation. I want to believe, I want to believe the report. I just see other things that don't seem to match up with that, which makes me very concerned.
Member Cole.
My question would be with Rodney, and talking about the topography of that area and the elevation of Greg Nelson's land as opposed to the elevation of the property that it is adjacent to. And I know from an engineering perspective that if you grade it so the, it's not higher than that area, that area, and put in, you know, culverts to run the water off, but from an engineering... I'm an architect, not an engineer, so I would have to rely on you to tell me that. But I know I've been in situations where that can happen, where we can drain the water away from that property. Now, I know you can't basically talk to that until you know what's going on the property, and you don't have a site plan to know what's going on the property. But just from an engineering perspective, what's your opinion?
So my opinion at this point is, this site will probably not be filled any more than the adjacent subdivision. The difference on this site is it will have dry retention on it to handle its stormwater. And if there is any drainage from that property to the east that drains onto this property, it's required by St. John's and the city that that water is handled also.
Okay. Sean, any comments on that?
We just wanted to say, or maybe Rodney can probably clarify, that, you know, filling in or impacts to these wetlands that is our surface water area... in or impacts of these wetlands that is our surface water area is going to require state permits in addition to any of our permits that we have. And they have to address adverse impacts. So they're going to have to look at the historic drainage. Now, it sounds like what Ms. Stokoe's saying, though, she's concerned about even meeting the minimum requirements might not be enough. But they ha, a developer or property owner has to have an expectation to meet certain standards that are in place. So it's...
Have we adjusted our minimum standards since?
We have. If, if you recall, a few months ago, we...
Okay, because that would be beneficial to know, I feel like...
We adopted amendments to our, um, stormwater requirements in our code.
So here we are. Um...
So I guess the, the only other thing I can think of in respect to Mr. Cole's, the councilman Cole's, uh, comments, is that there has to be a pre and a post study, drainage study on the site. And so the pre is the way it exists now. And then the post is after the development. And it's, and it's required that the post development has to be less than the pre. And so you have to maintain your water on site.
So by you, that would be the property owner?
So that'll be the property owner. And, and it will, this site will have to have dry retention. This site will only be allowed to have 40% impervious. The reason is it's in the area of critical concern. If it wasn't in area of critical concern, it could go up to probably 80% impervious. And so that means that there'll, there'll be a lot less impervious area and there'll be larger dry ponds to hold the water from this site. And if there's any water off of the adjacent site that comes onto this site, we'll have to take care of that, too.
Okay. Member Nelson?
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but is the Nelson property higher than Fairland?
It's currently lower.
It's lower.
I'm sure their site was filled in some.
I, 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 I see ya. I, I, I'm not sure that they're feeling that way. Um, okay, here, go ahead. Thank you, Rodney. Um...
I can answer that question.
Yeah, come on up here if you would. Give me your name and address and give me an answer because I think you deserve to say something.
I'm Scott Sharon in 22 Fairland Drive. We live, literally, our property's 12 feet from that lake. When you're at, at my yard, we look up to the Shell Station. Water can only come this way on that land. It's gravity. It's where water's going to go. We, we invite you to come look at our property. It's, you can't tell by this topography looking down.
Right, right.
Steep. There's, there's nowhere for that water to go except Fairland.
So you're saying the water is coming down from the Nelson property into your backyard area?
I'm sorry? It's from the Shell Station and Garden Street. All that water flows down into that pond. It's like a big holding basin that helps our neighborhood stay dry. Without that, all that water's going to go into the swamp that is approaching our yards. It's just a big holding tank to keep our, our, our neighborhood dry.
You're talking about the big, the big wetlands to the south?
It's wetlands. It was, it was, uh, surveyed in 2021 after their environmental survey was done. There was a survey done that was, it was determined wetlands, whether they want to call it wetlands or not. It, it was determined wetlands.
Okay.
What was that, what was that, uh? It's in public records. That's where I got it.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if you look at our property, west towards the pond and over toward Shell, it's high. And there's nowhere else for water to go. It can't go up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm not sure that speaker had a card. He might want to pull out a card.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, hey, uh, Mr. Sharon, yeah, I fell out of cards so we...
And since we're getting more, of course, Ms. Ruzenka, I have an opportunity to respond to that. You could also ask her, I think your questions were about filling the pond and, and historical. So, you know, you certainly asked there what would happen and what permits would be necessary if they were to impact this wetland from St. John's to address adverse impacts on the outs, on the site. Because right now we're dealing with land use and zoning questions. The issues we're dealing with, well, one day, what if they fill that pond? And then the process that would be associated with that and how that will be handled.
Where'd you go?
Well, I, I would say that it's more of an engineering issue. But from a layman's perspective, on the environmental side of things, I can tell you that currently there is no permit that regulates water on this property. One of the requirements that is going to have to occur is that we get a permit from St. John's River Water Management District. So Water Management District is exactly what it sounds like. It's a, a district that manages water. And so you're going to get a permit from them, which will then dictate where that water is going on this property and where it can't go. So in my mind, if you're concerned about water flow and where the water is going, then it's better to go ahead and get a permit in the future. With that being said, I don't think that's why we're here tonight. I think we're really talking about just 3.31 acres and changing its zoning.
Any questions? Thank you. Counsel? Ms. Ruzenka?
Thank you, sir. I just asked you to look back to, um, again, Kim Ruzenka representing Greg Nelson, to page one of my packet. And it doesn't show the topography, but it certainly doesn't show rivers flowing from Garden Street or Shell Street. This is a pond for the Nelson property. Um, the Fairglan, Fairland speculates that all their water is going there. We only have an engineer that says the water goes to the south. It goes into the wetlands. They, they were built a long time ago. They probably don't have a stormwater management. Uh, but again, any development on this project, which we're not here for the development because we don't have a site plan, uh, any, any development that happens here can't impact the neighbors. In fact, it has to be better when it's built than it is now. It has to account for the water that's going from Fairland now. And the engineering studies are onerous. Your staff will review it. It'll take eight months. It'll, it'll take a good long time for them to get it right. And again, there's, there's no, it, it has, it's, it's an access issue. They're probably not going to put the commercial building right next to Fairland. They can't. You're going to have setbacks. Not to mention you got 40% impervious. So that's not a lot for this 12, almost 12 acre site. So, um, I, I'd ask that, I understand your concerns. The engineer understands your concerns. Your staff understands your concerns. But this is comp plan and zoning, and it makes sense to allow this to change so the property can be used for commercial purposes, as was intended when this was a borough pit. And it wasn't the intent of the property owners to be, you know, a pond for everyone else's use.
And technically, that's all we're considering. And I, and I understand that. We've gone off into a lot of areas. I have genuine concerns about the flooding, I forgot the name of the street, Fairland. I have genuine concerns. I've seen too much of that in some areas like Member Stokoe was talking about. And then you just said that it would be y'all's job to, to make it better. Um, and, and I would, you know, that's, sounds like a win-win. Well, we'll make it better. There'll be less flooding. But I think back to Vice Mayor's point, um, how do we have a comparison to what's bad flooding now to better, least flooding later?
It's, it's an engineering issue. And I don't know what your new stormwater code says. Maybe it's, maybe it clears it up, but it's a pre-study and a post-study. And the post-study is what it's going to do. And then it has to be built. I mean, our firm handles these type of lawsuits, uh, but they're, that's generally because it's old development versus old development. So no, we can't prove right now that the development's not going to impact it. We know what the legal standards are. They're performance standards, which everyone has to abide by, by your code. This is a, a pure zoning issue because there's not proper access. So...
Member Stokoe.
Yeah. And I get that. And it's, I, the, it's a land use issue. Would be our first one before the zoning. And, and that's where I, I will say, I, I can see both sides with, when it comes to that. When you look in our comp plan, I mean, it, you have other high intensity use there, but also we have a whole section in our comp plan on the preservation of conservation areas as well. So I think that's where, when making our decision for the land use, is we have to balance out both of those, understanding both sides of that issue. The other stuff I know we have concerns on, but that is, again, and I keep, I have this with me every meeting to look at and see, okay, how can we best balance out the conservation, knowing that when I think about commercial, it would be on those major corridors as well, not going into the subdivisions so much so. So I, I see, I do see both sides.
Thank you.
Uh, whoever wishes to, either Brad or city attorney, break it down specifically because we can get caught up into a lot of different things we're thinking about that we're voting on. What exactly are we voting on?
Um, in the staff report, we mentioned the conservation element of the comprehensive plan, strategy number 1.6.3.2. And I'm just going to read that real quick and then another policy that might be relevant to what, to help you make your decision. So it says that a minimum wetlands, five acres or more in size shall be designated as a conservation land use and wetlands less than five acres will be subject to review to determine what protection, if any, they should receive from development. Said review shall be based on a functional value criteria specified in the following policy. So that functional value review was provided to you with environmental report by Mr. John Shepherd and an email conversation he had with St. John's Water Management District. And that's in your packet. And you probably have read that. It talks about the different functional value numbers based on their classification systems. So you have to make a call or make a determination as to whether you believe this meets the criteria, meets the strategy and other policies to approve or deny this land use request. It's either consistent or inconsistent with these policies. Another policy that was not mentioned in your staff report, but I do want to bring to your attention, and I think this is more related to the access question. And this is in the future land use element, policy 1.16.4. And I'll just read it here. Impacts to areas designated as conservation land use designation shall be considered, considered if it is unavoidable due to absence of feasible and or practical alternatives for reasonable use of the land, or the regulations create an inordinate burden on existing use of the land or a vested right to specific use of the land, or due to significant site constraint and or practical design modification constraint. The allowable impacts shall be based upon the specific evaluation determined through the permitting process conducted by all regulatory agencies with jurisdictions. Again, policy says will be evaluated during permitting process, but it does address the question as to whether they have, you know, reasonable use of their property. And already, uh, the applicant brought up the access question. And so when you look at the aerials and you look at the question as to where they reasonably can have access to their property, um, I think AFDOT would primarily only allow them to have it on the east side of where that gas station is and probably would not be reasonable on the west side, so close to the interchange there of 95. And so, but then they're blocked because of the existing location of the, of the surface water. So the question is, can, do they have reasonable access to this property as Mr. Nelson is asking for? So I think those are two particular strategies and policies from the comp plan you can consider in helping you make your decision. Um, basically, the request is, is the wetland and surface water, did they provide enough evidence to you to determine a functional value? Um, it is smaller than five acres. It is not adjacent to or outfall or contiguous to another larger wetland. And do they have a reasonable access to their property? And that's the question for your land use question. Then after that question is determined, then you have your quasi additional decision on the rezoning.
Member Stokoe.
Um, real quick, you said, um, so this piece of property they could access, but what'd you say about the surface water? It might make it not usable?
I think, I'm looking at Mr. Honeycutt's exhibit that he gave to you that shows where they can reasonably have a, a vehicle or, or access to the property. And they'll be very limited on the west side there. The closer they are, if they try to provide an act, or they probably will not get an access, I, from what I understand, uh, close to I-95 because of the interchange. So they're limited to the other side of the property on the east side of that gas station. But then because of the, where the location of this pond is, that limits their abilities where they can put their road. So then that brings up that policy that I just stated in the future land use element about have impacts to designated areas or conservation land use designation may be considered unavoidable. And so then it talks about further how you can determine that.
That, and that was one of my concerns is having reasonable access, which is why I asked at the beginning, had they considered, um, instead of reason, or changing the land use for all of the conservation, maybe just changing it for this portion at the top and leaving this conservation and not trying to do the whole thing?
I, yeah, okay. So I don't have an answer, a good answer for you about whether maybe half of what they're requesting should be changed or maybe a portion?
That way they still, I want them to be able to have access. I feel like that's a fair request and ask. If, if you have property, you want to be able to access it. This flipside is, if that's a big chunk of conservation, to, I think, to do away with the whole thing for land use, I think would be, it, I, I think it could impact. Um, so...
I think if you decide to go halfway, or I think it might, the applicant's going to probably ask for full flexibility, mainly because once they get to design, then they'll know for sure what they really can do. And they may just have to come back to you again.
Okay. And that way they can see where they can access it by things that we might not be aware of and yet still keeping some of the conservation. Okay. That's kind of...
Member Cole.
I guess, as, uh, Member Stokoe said, I can understand both sides of the equation here. But I guess my concern is, is there any way that we can allay the fears of the residents that we are not going to allow the property to further damage their properties with flooding? I mean, I, I think they're, I want to help them with their concern. And at the same time, I want to be able to, because I realize that we can't make any decisions until we have a site plan, until we know what's actually going there. So is there any way we could let these people know that, that we are concerned about that, at the same time, approve this? And because it's an incremental improvement, improve, uh, approval. Because once we do this, they still have to come back with the site plan for a site plan approval or something like that. So help me out. Am I headed in the right direction here? And in a way that we can make them feel like they're not, and something's not going to be taken away from them?
I think it's the area of critical concern standards. They go above and beyond even state requirements or stormwater requirements. So the 40% maximum impervious standard is pretty stringent. And it does have additional sta, that's just one standard. There's several others in there, too, that talk about the design of your stormwater system. Um, I... So, okay, so for here, I'll read the excerpt from the staff report in page 525 of your packet. The area of critical concern regulate, regulatory standards may significantly reduce the build-out potential of the property. Generally, the total of all impervious surfaces shall not exceed 40%, the total area of the development. In addition, there are limitations on the amount of fill that can be brought to the property, uh, limitations on the amount of topography that may be removed, and stormwater performance standards that are very specific to the ACC. So it will be, they will have to meet all, all those standards. That goes above and beyond any other sta, uh, regular standards.
So even if we, uh, approve the, uh, application, nothing happens till we go to a site plan. And then that has to be approved as well?
Yeah, site plan, they'll have to be approved.
Well, basically, what I'm getting at, this is just basically, um, this is just basically what? You, you put it out there. What, what exactly are we approving?
So the applicant's asking you to change the land use amendment, remove that conservation land use and replace it with surrounding commercial high intensity. And so the question to you is, is it a good policy decision? And I've read two strategies and policies from the comp plan that might be most relevant to what you're trying to help you make your decision.
But it, that approval doesn't give any, there's, there's no, uh, project approved. There's no...
Correct.
Unis, there's nothing approved except the, the change of status.
Correct. Either whether this land use is on there or not, as conservation or commercial, they still have to go through the same hoops for mitigating wetlands, state and, and our own process, and get a site plan approved.
I mean, we've, and we've had... I mean, we've, and we've had concerns about traffic, and, um, that certainly would be something down the road, whatever was to be developed would have to be a traffic study. The biggest concern I have for, for them, of course, is in my mind, and I think it's their biggest concern, is the flooding. Now, I would say you've got flooding, but, and they haven't done anything. My concern, and I think it's your concern, is, well, we've already got flooding, is this gonna make it worse? I, I can certainly understand that. But at the same time, we're, we're just changing the status of, of, of the land and not, not really having them do anything. Is that correct, right now? That's all we're doing? We're not approving anything to be done?
As far as a development proposal?
Right, right. Member Stokel?
Um, okay, you said 40% can be impervious, so what would the other 60% theoretically be?
Pervious.
Like, can you give us some examples, I guess?
Concrete and asphalt is, well, that total area of what's being covered with concrete and asphalt would be counted towards that 40%.
Okay.
So everything else with this vegetation...
So parking lot would have to be counted in that 40%.
Yes, ma'am.
Every building would be counted in the 40%. So, would the rest be grass and pub, and dry pond?
Could be ponds, drainage, uh, wherever pervious, where the rain can percolate through. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, Member Nelson?
So you said there's a limit on the amount of fill that can be brought in?
Yeah, it's very specific about, um, what you can take on and off the property. So this is standard, the performance standards, and then the area, area critical concern for development, that are more stringent than other areas, including what you can remove off and what you can add in the property, depending on what's going on.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, would you, uh, Brad, read me again the, the second option that, that we have?
These, are, are you talking about the other policy that I read?
Yeah, one something that the other policy...
I was reading future land use element policy 1.16.4.
One?
16.4.
1.64, okay. All right.
Okay.
And, and read it, and say that again, because my hearing sometimes loses me.
Sure. Uh, it says, "The impacts to areas designated as conservation land use designation shall be considered if it is unavoidable, unavoidable, due to absence of feasible and/or practical alternatives for reasonable use of the land, or the regulations create an inordinate burden on an existing use of land."
Yeah. All right. Thank you, thank you, Brad.
Member Stokel?
I guess for our discussion, I'm just kind of curious where everyone else is at. I think what's important for me is, one, I do want them to have access, I think that's important. I feel like I would feel more comfortable if we gave them half and had them have flexibility, so we didn't change all of conservation to high intensity. But, um, I, I'm kind of, I don't know if anybody else has any other creative ideas. Again, it, this is a tough one for me.
I don't know about creative ideas, I think I kind of said it, I'd like them to have access and everybody else be aware that that doesn't do anything as far as there's, this will be right back here again if there's going to be any movement on something being done.
And it makes me feel better about the 40% can be impervious and the 60% can't, so, that, I will say that does make me feel a lot better.
But I, I don't want people leaving here thinking, oh, they proved that we didn't prove anything, nothing's gonna happen out there. That's, that's the bottom line right now, because this whole thing will happen again and say, oh, well, we've got, we're gonna, you know, build this hotel, or that hotel, or this gas, or whatever. That doesn't happen, um, without the major deal again. Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, uh, my thoughts on it is, um, we have two options here, and, um, uh, we have to approve it or find a, um, a, a legitimate, a, a lawful reason for denying it or slowing it down. And I, because of, of, of the history of the land, my thoughts is that we should stand on 1.64 for further inquiries into the land. That's my thoughts on it.
Clarify 1.64 first.
1.64, I would have to...
1.16.4, the future land use element.
Yeah. 1.16.
It says, "Impacts to areas designated as conservation land use as designation shall be considered if it is unavoidable due to absence of feasible and/or practical alternatives for reasonable use of the land." That's the first part of the sentence. So it talks about the conservation land use, and whether you're gonna be impacting a wetland in there.
And, and, and the reason that I say that, you know, you've got a lot of history here, and, uh, these people have lived it. And, uh, un, un, until, uh, that concern is satisfied, we need to stand on what is legal and what, what we know that history tells us. And, uh, if, if we can do it under that, my thoughts will, uh, will be making a motion to deny the request based on the one that we have.
What I, what I was reading here, when I read, let me read the rest of the paragraph thing.
Okay.
It says, "Or the regulations create an inordinate burden on an existing use of land or a vested right to a specific use of the land, or due to significant site constraint and/or practical design modification constraint. The allowable impacts shall be based upon site-specific evaluation determined through permitting process conducted by all regulatory agencies with jurisdiction." So saying, even though you have the conservation land use on a piece of property, there could be an impact to the wetland that it's technically trying to preserve because of some practical issues. So you can't, you can't avoid it because of some impact that's gonna have to happen, such as potentially access requirements.
Right, so staff, is that applicable to evaluating allowable impacts, or is that applicable to evaluating the proper land use zone?
I think it's, well, it says at site-specific, but it talks about whether you want, you could probably use this to say whether you want to keep the conservation land use on there and allow them to, to determine the impact to it during the permitting stage. Or you could probably identify this as to say, maybe it's unavoidable, and so it would probably justify a portion of this conservation land use to be adjusted in order to allow them to have access now with the proper land use. So I don't have a good answer, Richard, on that, but that's what it says here. But I, you could leave it to the regulatory stage, too.
Yeah, I, I, I want to, to go with him, but I do also want to, you know, to make sure that the resident over on Fairlang, uh, uh, gets some, some, some true evaluation before everything goes too far down that hill, before, so we can't stop it.
And how we would word that?
Just let me know, and I will.
Yeah. Any other council members got anything you want to add here? We're coming to the end here, and we're gonna have to make a motion to somebody. That means any of y'all know what you want to do? Uh, Vice Mayor Robinson, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Brad, before I get started, can I make a, a mo, a motion that what you just read, uh, be conducted in the, in the particular stage if we approve it?
You're making a condition of your, as part of your motion?
Right.
Well, this is a land use decision.
Right.
So you need to make a decision, I'm not sure that's appropriate.
Vice Mayor, what I, what I believe you're asking is, if it, if that is part of our comprehensive plan, then that exists as a requirement of our comprehensive plan. Right now, you're gonna determine, is it appropriate to change the land use and the zoning? And the question is, I, and Brad can correct me wrong, this is, if you have a property that is conservation, um, and you want to impact it, and you want to get permits from the city, we'll look at the ability to provide those permits to impact a wetland based on the, that analysis. I think the report and the other comp plan provisions that were mentioned is what you evaluate when you're changing the land use, such as the functional value. And when you're deciding whether or not this conservation area is appropriate to change and being under five acres, whether it complies with the comprehensive plan with regard to the functional value of that wetland and that criteria, et cetera.
Wow.
Well...
That's correct.
You tell me how to word it.
Well, before you go there, so, in, in, in quasi, quasi cases, we sometimes can't disvote because we think this is not a good thing, we have to vote based on the, the law, the legality.
Correct. The first decision is your land use change, which is a legislative decision. You can approve it if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, if you're gonna deny it, it'd have to be fairly debatable as to, you know, showing why it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan. The, once you change the land use, then you'll look at your quasi judicial with the zoning.
All right.
And you cannot approve a zoning if you don't, in this case, you can ask staff, but you can't have a zoning that's inconsistent with your land use. So if you deny the land use, then the zoning could not be applied if it's gonna be inconsistent. What you're analyzing now is the land use that you discussed, um, and the criteria and the evidence that was presented with regard, first, to land use change, um, and the comprehensive plan criteria associated with wetlands less than five acres, as was presented. And certainly, I, what I say, I can't provide you evidence, only your staff, and what you heard from fact-based testimony presented.
Our, our staff report, it indicates, we, like, the first strategy I mentioned out of the conservation element, 1.6.3.2, it talks about wetlands that are five acres or less, and in this case, it's not even adjacent to any other wetland, that you review it based on its functional value. And so, the applicant provided that to us. We thought, if, based on the information that's given to us, that we could recommend approval of this, from staff's point of view, based on the information that's provided to us, consistent with that strategy and other policies. But what I'm trying to point out with the other policy, 1.16.4, is that even with the conservation land use still there, if this is denied and it's still there, they still have the potential to make the argument through the site development process and permitting requirements, that they can impact a wetland, even with that conservation land use on there. So, what I'm trying to bring up is that the question about access could be something you could consider as part of your decision on whether this is a good policy decision to change the land use on this property.
Member Cole?
Basically, let me, let me try to word something here, and then I'll ask you guys for help. If we approve this tonight, the property owners have another bite at this apple when it comes back for site development. So this is where this discussion really needs to be held, not here, right? I mean, it would be down the road when it's determined what's going there, the engineering drawings will be done, site development, drainage off the property, that would be the next step, not at this step. So if we approve this, what I don't want is for the property owners to go away and, and think that we just gonna let water flow on their property, additional, okay? I just want to make sure that they understand, if we approve this, we're approving it because we're changing the land use, but they still have to come back before us, and they still have the opportunity to say something about it, when whoever develops the property come in with their site plans. And is that, and is what I'm saying correct?
Yes, they still do. I mean, just, you have to understand, too, that with the land use, that's, they're asking for ultimate flexibility. So when they come in and do their design, they'll find out for sure exactly what exactly they're gonna impact, or maybe all of it, or maybe some portion is all they need to do. But they don't know what part they're really gonna impact, really depends. So they're asking for ultimate flexibility by changing this conservation, so everything's commercial. Because if they, if the commercial remain, or the, the conservation remains, that limits their uses in that area that's got the land use of commer, of conservation and the OR zoning. So the entire property is commercial, you have more flexibility as to where you can lay your buildings and your improvements and all of that. So they, it, they're asking for that flexibility. But either way, they're still gonna have to go through the regulatory agencies to impact a wetland.
I'm still not sure that I got the answer that I was looking for here. And I, what I was looking for is the fact that this, there will be a site plan that is developed, and that site plan, when they come up with the engineering drawings for the site plan and the topography as it relates to this, this particular residential area, that has to meet the guidelines, that it doesn't, the water doesn't flow, flow back on them. So they get to come in and comment on that aspect of it. Again, so they get another bite at this apple, and this is not, the forum or this particular ordinance is strictly to change the zoning and not to approve any kind of site development now.
That's correct, but I think you're, the, it depends on what they're trying to propose, so that the land use and zoning is approved, and later on, they submit to us a site plan. It really depends on what they're proposing, whether they'll, the public will be notified as for a public hearing, because most site plans in the city of Titusville are administratively approved. If they propose a subdivision, a residential subdivision, or any kind of subdivision of land, that would have to be brought to you as, as a sketch plan at some stage of the process. If the use they're proposing in the commercial zoning district is, requires a conditional use permit, that would have to come back to you. But generally, no, a site plan is an administrative process, and those have to meet the requirements for any state requirements and our requirements for stormwater and any other design standards.
Member Stokel?
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to try to clarify what I think I heard. So, if we don't approve this, that, that whole piece stays conservation, they cannot do anything on conservation. That was what we want, correct?
The comprehensive plan, it does allow some impact to wetlands, even with that conservation land use, if it's unavoidable.
Okay.
There's a process for that.
Yes.
The, the problem is, is that the conservation land use won't allow other uses on that property. So in other words, if they are gonna have to impact a large area of that wetland, they're gonna, they can't, they'll be limited as to where they can put their commercial uses. They all has to be outside of the boundaries of what's owned OR.
Okay. Secondly, if we were to approve half of it and give them flexibility, basically, they would be able to pick which part of the conservation area would be changed?
Yeah, you can't, it'd be a self-amending zoning district or comp plan land use category, you can't do that.
So how would that work? It would, we would have to give direction as to...
Well, the boundaries of the district that's being changed has to be very, has to be specific in the ordinance.
Okay. So that, I feel like then that would not be an option at this point in time, because...
You would have to find, ask the applicant, but I don't think that would be, um, practical.
Okay, so I'm gonna nix that idea. And then, um, third one, if we did approve it, um, so now the whole piece would be zoned high intensity. However, when they go to do the site plan, go through the administrative process, how do you guys look at that strip, now that it's, land use has changed and potentially the zoning has changed, but it's clearly still wet? What do you guys do?
So they'd have to go through the regulatory agencies for any regulatory permits they have to get from St. John's or any other agencies.
Even though the land use has changed, you guys are still treating it as a wetland?
With, it's a wetland according to the state, so they'll have to get state permits, and they'll also have to deal with us with the site development permit.
Okay.
All right, let's, you've got one? Let's go, let's see what we got.
Microphone, please.
Under rezoning. This is my emotion.
Land use.
Is this a land use?
Yeah.
Under land use?
We're dealing with ordinance number 172023, first, uh, under the small-scale amendment.
Okay. This is my motion under the, uh, conditional use permit.
This is not a conditional use, this is a land use change.
Land use change.
Land use change, so this is not on my list?
This is under a small scale.
Okay, um, uh, under the, uh, uh, my motion is to deny, uh, under, uh, the, the land use, uh, for, uh, ordinance, under ordinance number 172023, amending the code ordinance by amending the ordinance of, um, uh, 60 dash 19, 11988. Is that correct?
Your motion is to deny ordinance number 17...
And, and based on 116, 1 dash 16, uh, dash... And based on 116, 1-16-64.
I believe that comp plan policy was with regard to impacts to conservation land use.
That's what I'm trying to get to, you give me, help me get the right wording. I'll put it there. But that's what I stand on.
Basically, to deny land use change.
Saying it's not consistent with the comp plan.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
All right, that's Vice Mayor's motion. Do I have a second? Member Stokoe?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
No.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
No.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
I guess I'll just say this, motion passes four to one. Obviously, very, very difficult. I can explain my concerns later. But anyway, thank you, thank you. With that, we're going to take a seven-minute recess.
You still have the zoning ordinance.
We'll get back to it. I want to clear some people out. You're welcome.
What is your? Well, the Cincelinus were correct, did not change and stayed consistent. Is the requested zoning consistent with the now land use?
Right, a commercial zoning is not consistent with the conservation land use.
You cannot approve a zoning that would be inconsistent with the land use.
Member Stokoe.
I guess so, do we call cards and then make them?
You called all the cards, you did the zoning and the land use in one.
So, we just need a motion to deny.
You need a motion on this ordinance.
Okay, motion to deny ordinance number eighteen dash twenty twenty-three due to it being inconsistent with the land use.
Motion and second, roll call vote.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Passes, City Manager.
Onto item nine C, which is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment SSA number six twenty twenty-two Palmetto Complex that consists of two ordinances, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-three and ordinance number twenty twenty-three, and the city attorney will read the ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately point five four plus or minus acres of property located on Palmetto Street, having Bovard County parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash oh-four dash zero zero dash five three and twenty-two dash thirty-five dash oh-four dash zero zero dash five zero from low-density residential future land use designation to medium-density residential future land use designation and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five dash nineteen ninety-three of the City of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a partisan ordinance by reference by changing the single-family medium-density R-one-B zoning district to the multifamily medium-density residential R-two zoning district on approximately point five four plus minus acres of property located on Palmetto Street, Titusville, Florida, Bovard County parcel ID number twenty-two dash thirty-five dash oh-four dash zero zero dash five three and twenty-two dash thirty-five dash oh-four dash oh-oh dash five oh and providing for an effective date.
At the eighth March twenty twenty-three planning and zoning meeting, they approved the land use change from low-density residential future land use to medium-density residential future land use seven zero. They also approved the rezoning from single-family medium-density R-one-B zoning district to multifamily medium-density R-two zoning district on point seven eight acres, that was seven zero. The applicant and property owner, Rocham Investments, is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning of approximately point seven eight acres for the purpose of constructing a multifamily residential building. The subject property includes two unplatted parcels located at the eastern terminus of Palmetto Street and has approximately two hundred and eighty feet of frontage on Palmetto Street, a local road. The intent of this request is to change the future land use designation of the property from low-density residential to medium-density residential and rezone the property from single-family medium-density zoning to multifamily medium-density to support the intended use of the multifamily. Brad's here to answer any questions that you may have, and this is your public hearing's final reading.
So this land use application is to allow for a single-family zoning or a land use or a low-density of land use to be up to a medium-density land use, which allows from five units per acre to ten units per acre. On page six seventeen of your packet, on the staff report, the policy related to the medium-density residential uses, which is policy one point fourteen point five, states maximum ten units per acre shall consider existing and proposed land uses. Sorry, I've got the wrong one here. No, I'm reading the wrong one, so fourteen point five, yes, so consider existing and proposed land uses to ensure compatibility. Further such densities shall be located adjacent to at least a collector's street unless located along Rock Pit Road. So, this land use is primarily supposed to be on a collector or higher classification of a street. Rock Pit Road is a local road, so Rock Pit Road in this policy is called out specifically to be allowed for it. The medium-density residential land use category is adjacent to Rock Pit Road and extends out to this property on Palmetto. And I'll refer you to the land use map on page six forty-five of your packet. Excuse me, I got it the other way around. It's the medium-density residential is just adjacent to the north of this property, and so that district itself is being extended further south onto Palmetto Street. The existing land use category that's adjacent to the north there is there, and so we didn't see an issue, we found it consistent with the comp plan, we didn't find any consistency as far as expanding the boundaries of it onto Palmetto Street. And that's why we recommended approval.
All right, with that, I need a motion to carry on the meeting. I think I was told five minutes ago and I forgot.
So moved.
Second.
What time we're gonna go to?
Eleven, eleven fifteen.
Eleven, okay, I have a motion, a second. Voice vote, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, all right, go back.
The other policy I want to state to you is policy one point seven point seven of the comp plan, and this is specifically to the future land use settlement. And this is about infill development. And that is infill development are skipped over vacant pieces of property in built-up areas that have been platted or previously developed for more than twenty years. And it goes into more standards of what those are. So we looked at it primarily because of those two particular policies that we found that this request to change the land use to medium-density is consistent with the comprehensive plan and in addition to all the other policies that are stated in the staff report. As far as the rezoning, we believe it meets the criteria in the rezoning, criteria of the code of section thirty-four dash forty, and we recommend approval of the rezoning from single-family to the medium-density multifamily zoning district, which allows a maximum density of nine units per acre. So they will be maxed out to five residential units in one particular, possibly in one structure on this piece of property. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you have. And Mr. Derek Berse is also here to answer any questions, he's the applicant.
Okay, this is quasi.
Land use is legislative, the rezoning will be quasi-dish.
Okay. Can I call the applicant up anyway, or no? Be a good idea, I think, put it all together.
Mayor, there's a concept plan on page six thirty-one of your packet, and that's what the applicant provided to us. So if this rezoning is approved, this concept plan would be tied to that.
Okay. So just to get it right and it's late, call cards first or applicant?
Applicant.
You conduct a public hearing, there's one public hearing, you will vote on them separately.
Applicant, come on up. Sorry you guys got to be the tail end of the night. I saw you walk in early, I always try to put people what they are, and now I get it, sorry about that.
Hopefully we'll be quick. Good evening, my name is Stavros Sajustavridis. I'm with Consulting Civil Engineers. We're the civil engineers for this project. We're at thirty-six fifty Bobby Lane, right off of four oh five, suite one nineteen. Like I said, I'm with the engineering. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, council, any questions? I see none, go ahead and sit down, we may call you back up and certainly you'll have a chance to respond. Call the cards, please.
One card, Stan Johnston.
You may, thank you, sir. Counsel? I don't know that we need to pull you up, there's nobody said anything, do we want to go with a motion? No?
I can do it.
Member Nelson?
Moved to approve small-scale comp plan amendment number six dash twenty twenty-two Palmetto Complex based on the staff reports that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Well, and that is for ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
They do, okay, yes.
All right, Member Nelson's made the motion.
Second.
Member Stokoe has seconded it, roll call vote.
Excuse me, Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Passed unanimously, next up.
Onto new, or ordinances first reading, this will be ordinance.
We still need to do the rezoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I jumped the gun, I apologize.
It's after ten thirty. We gotta do, we gotta do the second part now, the quasi-part. Okay, what kind of motion do we make now? Here he comes, somebody's coming here.
Okay. Let me ask you this, Richard, we're on.
This is rezoning.
Okay.
Based upon everything presented, I move to approve the rezoning.
This is really not that.
Is that right?
Sure.
Rezoning of five dash one nine nine three ordinance and ordinance.
It's ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three this time, okay.
Ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-three.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-three, amending the code of the ordinance by amending.
It's ordinance number twenty twenty twenty-three.
What'd he say?
Let's just say, so moved.
So moved, and finding that the request finding that the request is consistent with the approval criteria in section thirty-four dash forty of the land development regulation.
I got a motion by Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second by Member Cole, roll call vote.
Okay, just want to confirm that includes the concept plan too.
Yes.
All right, Member Nelson. Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Passed unanimously, City Manager.
Now we're on to ordinances first reading, this is ordinance number twenty-one twenty three amending section two dash twenty-eight code of ordinances increasing the salary of council members and mayor.
Ordinance number twenty-one twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending section two dash twenty-eight of the code of ordinances by increasing the salary of council members and mayor providing for severability incorporation under the code and for an effective date.
Staff, yeah, Staff I'm sure has nothing on that.
What we did is we did a comparative analysis of the surrounding communities as well as Bovard County, taking a look at also your pay and benefits. This is your pay portion, and we're going to come back with your participation in the four oh one four fifty-seven.
Thank you, sir, cards, please. Oh, Vice Mayor here.
No, I was just gonna make a motion.
We don't have one on this, it's the first reading, so we'll be good. All right, call the cards, please.
I had one for Nathan Slusher, but I believe he's left, and then Stan Johnston.
No. You have more, nevermind, I have to say it's more here than Nathan.
Stan Johnston, I'm speaking to you as a professional engineer, living here over fifty years and having videos. I want you to understand is that my sewage claim, facts and so forth, not opinion. Mr. Cole was talking about, opinions, these are facts. And the thing is, is that I've got videos of the sewer coming out of the manhole. I would step on the manhole and the manhole would lift up, that lid would lift up.
Stop clock. What are you, which one are you talking about? This has got nothing to do with that, do you even know?
It's got to do about giving you a pay, higher pay.
Well, talk about that.
I'm gonna say no.
Well, talk about that in some way, as you've said.
Okay, that's what I'm doing.
You've said that five times today, okay, go ahead, start clock.
So what I'm doing is that you don't deserve an increase in pay, I mean, look at, what's going on here? Is that you don't return my calls, you don't respond to my emails, you don't read my emails. And look, I mean, you know, you turn your back to me like Mr. Cole, see? He just turns his back, closed doors, and in this case.
Oh, timeout, we didn't start the clock.
Okay, do I have to go backwards now? Say it backwards.
You're in timeout for ten seconds.
Pardon?
You're in timeout for ten seconds.
Timeout for ten seconds.
All right, go.
Okay, go. All right, so the thing is, is that, is that the truth is, is that I'm standing on these manhole lids and the manhole lid's lifting up and I have a video, not just a photo, a video of the sewer coming out right here, right here where the sewer's coming out of the lift station. I got a video of it coming out of the lift station. No, that is, you got proof right now. You can go to the lift station, you can see where they sprayed foam in the holes where the sewer came out. And this is the picture of the sewage, so forth. I've got all kinds of witnesses, I've got a video of it coming out of the manhole. So what I'm saying is that you don't deserve it because you're not telling the truth and you're not looking into this matter. Nine city streets, including spraying people that would come to us if they were at this senior center pond. So the guy right here, the shyster, he's a shyster because he's a liar. He's in all, yeah, and you, and the thing is, if you read what I sent to you, I said, I said, why city council has not removed our city manager for his outrageous dishonesty and cover-ups in the above matters, that's number twelve. That's eleven items above that.
Is that about our pay?
Yes, it's about your pay. You have no business getting a raise when you have a shyster who's just lying to us, and you guys are like puppets and parrots, minions. You have no business agreeing with what he's saying, because it's a lie. It's false reports, you guys are supporting false reports. You are afraid of, you're afraid of the truth, especially the guy who turns his back to me. He's a coward, you heard it. You guys are cowards, liars and cowards.
Stop clock, stop clock. You're gonna get into calling names and pointing fingers, we just went through that, we don't want to do that again.
No, no, I'm telling the truth.
Sit down and be done, so let's go.
No, no, listen.
You can say you're telling the truth, that doesn't make it the truth.
It is the truth.
Okay, no, 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 you think it's the truth, all right, I'm not gonna argue anymore.
Right here.
Go, start the clock.
This is the truth, I've got videos, videos. I'm not talking about just photos, videos of this guy lying. That guy right there, I'm pointing a finger, because he's a liar and a cheat and a shyster. He has no business here, as far as I can, it appears that he can't resist telling a lie, like a psycho. How much do you know this guy? How much do you know? And so, so I have here, it's city's number thirteen.
Stop, you're good.
I have an extra time, extra minute.
I know him well enough to know that he's not called you the names you've called him, and I'll just.
Of course, I'm telling the truth though.
And that's a you thing, but anyway, go ahead, sit down.
Thank you, God bless you.
God bless you. God bless you, where the heck am I? Go ahead, City Manager.
We're on to new business, this is a consideration that staff has coordinated with the Chamber of Commerce on the possibility of leasing the second floor Chamber of Commerce building located at two thousand South Washington Avenue for mayor and city council's office. We've got the startup cost and the estimates, should you choose to move forward. This is just direction, if you would like for staff to continue to pursue this.
I think we could give away without a vote on this for lots of reasons, but I would have been in discussion with City Manager on that and sounded like a good idea at first, but there's a lot of reasons I don't think it's a good idea now. First of all, I've gotten to see the amount that it will cost, more than I thought it would. And secondly, in this day and age, it's very difficult for me to go up there by myself and meet with anybody. You know what I mean? And I don't think for that reason it's going to be very useful. As a matter of fact, I can go up and down the line, I think all y'all would deal with the same situation in different ways. So I just don't think it's a good idea, and I think if we agree on that, I don't think we necessarily need to vote on it, but go ahead, and anybody have anyone to add to that, or no?
We agree.
We agree.
We agree.
I think we have an agreement that we're gonna move away from that. If you don't mind, I don't think we need.
No, it was just direction.
And thank you, let me make it very clear, thank you for thinking that, because more times than not you hear me saying, I think we got no office, I got no files, I got no, and he tried to, and that just kind of came open at the same time, and it sounded really good. And then we started thinking about it, I think you were saying, oh, you can't go meet with them, and you can't do this, and it's just, I'm better off just meeting at River Lanes or wherever I meet, or in my office or the office, our office, so I'm very fine with just leaving that alone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe when we get the new city hall, like cubicles or something like that, but that was another thing I inquired about, to see if we had any space here, and we just don't. But yeah, I don't think I would feel comfortable going outside of city hall for that.
Yeah, on the flip side there. I think we all would have trouble being alone in that situation. Thank you, City Manager, that was a great effort on your part.
Mayor, we do have one card on the item.
Okay, good, wait, we didn't vote on anything. Still need to take a card, you know we didn't vote?
It isn't a gender item for your consideration, you do vote to.
So you're saying that I don't have to, but I can if I want? You might pass, you might not. There's not much on this one, but anyway, what do you got, Stan? We're not going there, just so you know.
I've probably got three minutes on this, but maybe less.
I agree with you.
I thought you would, I mean, I didn't really, this made no sense. Thank you, I guess, City Manager.
Onto twelve B, which is Resolution nine twenty twenty-three, accepting the clean water state revolving fund amendment. On December thirteenth twenty twenty-two, council approved the award of contract bid to Young's Communications LLC of Melbourne, Florida for the construction of the Indian River Sewerage Force Main Project in the amount of eight thousand, or eight million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, and approved the budget amendment recognizing the approved increase in the state revolving fund loan based on FDEP's approval amendment. Now the city has received an amendment, and we're bringing back to council for your approval. It's recommended that city council adopt Resolution nine twenty twenty-three, accepting the clean water state revolving fund amendment one, raising the loan amount to nine million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars for the construction of the Indian River Force Main Improvement Project. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute this amendment.
Member Nelson.
Something I need to know upfront, is this going to impact the water bill?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, okay.
It is a loan, and it's not.
This is a state revolving loan, and it, we don't start paying on the loan until the project's complete. And the loan is a point, it's a less than one percent loan for a thirty-year period.
And how long till the project is complete?
It'll take a while. Contract terms, three hundred and thirty-five days.
Tell me again?
Three hundred and thirty-five days from go.
About a year. Anything else you want to add to that, Kevin?
No, the City Manager covered everything, the loan rate was substantially less than one percent, I think first payment's in twenty twenty-five.
And the reason the amount basically doubled was the economy, inflation?
It's, yes, it's an engineer's estimate from a couple of years ago, was what the original request from FDEP was, and then when you got the real bid back, cost of materials and labor, of course. And this project takes the sewer line off of the Indian River Lagoon, and this is one of our older sewer lines, it's in need of replacement.
Well, I certainly, for the Indian River Lagoon's sake, I'm very happy about what we're doing with that and maybe avoid any issue like that ever again, but you know, the cost is what the cost is, and it is a loan, and it's nice we don't do anything with it till we get completed. Member Nelson.
So is that going to get rid of that lift station at the end of South Street?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so that will stay?
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding is that, is that is in bad repair, are we looking at?
That's actually one of the better ones.
This one of the better ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, and we just made some significant investments in shelf replacement pumps, temporary breakers, stuff of that nature to bring that station to even a further state of backup redundancy.
Okay.
So.
So this, these improvements will go from there north?
Yes, South Street Station to the sewer plant. It'll be on the Marina Road side of the railroad tracks now, as it currently it's on the far side.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm speaking as a professional engineer. I have some doubts about what's going on, especially in Water Resources Department, not with Mr. Cook. And I've seen some, some things happen in my life that are incredibly amazing. For example, we had a bridge collapse in Miami, with a pedestrian bridge that was Florida Atlantic, Florida International University, I believe, so forth and like that. Horrible mistakes were made by the engineer, horrible mistakes.
Remember that.
I even took a course on the mistakes that the guy took, made. So somehow it goes to the Board of Professional Engineers, it's all wiped clear. I don't believe it, it's just incredible what's going on. I've known of somebody having a clog in their storm sewer, and they redo the whole storm sewer, didn't have to, all they had to do was fix the, fix the clog. I got another story of which a company came, got a bid to replace a eighty-inch line with a ten-inch sanitary sewer line. Went down there and found a ten-inch sanitary sewer line, it was already there, it wasn't an eighty-inch, it was ten-inch. City said, go ahead and do it anyways, so they dug it up, did it anyways. I'm hearing all sorts of horrible stories. Now, for example, in a force main, is that you not only have, I mean, are we sometimes replacing something because of somebody screwed up on an inspection as far as, for example, that sewage leak that went under the ditch at Sandpoint Park? And they blamed it on some, some kind of construction error? Or was it, or was it perhaps water hammer? Water hammer, somebody taking a valve and closing it too fast on the force main, caused water hammer, bam! You can bust lines with closing water mains too fast, sewer mains and so forth. And there's, there's different kind of valves that can cause, cause a water main to bust. What I'm saying is, I do not believe that we are having significant investigation of our problems. We have wellfields being destroyed, destroyed because over pumping, instead of pumping improperly. We have millions of dollars. It's unbelievable what the errors that the City of Titusville is going through, and we're not looking into them, and we're not listening either. I don't think anybody listened to a word I said, but anyhow, I'm concerned about this particular issue about water resources especially, because they have made so many mistakes. Like, for example, pumping, pumping Space View Park Pond. That was pumping the Indian River. And they did it, they spent hundreds of, over a hundred thousand dollars.
Thanks, Stan.
Pumping the Indian River.
Appreciate it. All right, we got five more minutes, so we'll just leave that alone. Uh, Member Nelson?
Move to adopt Resolution number nine dash twenty twenty-three, accepting clean water state revolving fund loan, raising the amount from two nine million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Okay. Second petitions and requests, I see none. You're in timeout, you can't come up. City Manager.
Mayor's report and council?
I'll go first, because we got another thing to vote on real quick, but I wanted to acknowledge the passing of Jane Spidell, whose resignation from the PNZ, we just accepted last meeting. She wanted to make a difference in people's lives until the day she couldn't, so she did. Thus, I named her the winner of the Mayor's Community Spirit Award, and I can think of nobody more appropriate. I won't get into all the stories of, she joined Rotary in her last couple of weeks of life, just to make a difference. And she's inspiring to me, so I wanted to give her a shout-out here and note the award that she will receive at the city picnic. I also want to congratulate Member Nelson, Vice Mayor Robinson, and the whole team for the Boys and Girls Club's success, and we had an open house, was that an anniversary, was that the first anniversary?
No, we just decided to do it in an open house.
But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I say this?
Sure.
The Fire Department and Police Department got together, and they want to have different days, activity days over the summer.
Cool.
And we are all cordially invited for their water day.
Water day, I thought you were gonna say pie eating, we're not doing that again.
No, we're not.
We're not doing that again. Oh my God, you remember that? We're not doing that again. Oh, my God. You remember that?
Oh, God, that was horrible.
You don't have, you don't have a chocolate cream pie when you're, anyway.
Which is melting.
But I wanted to say that I was gonna say as well, the T P D and the fire department for being on, you know, at the open house and making such a difference. I, I got to get involved with some, but I also got to watch inside. The T P D just, it's so natural to them to get involved with the kids and play the video games, which I can't play. I gotta learn some of those, I guess. But anyway, and then I went outside and the fire department was doing their whole demonstration. It was fantastic. And my hat's off to you every single day. I was telling Jeff Davis about that today at Chief Lyles' mother's celebration of life. And he said, you know, he wanted to get out there that they had an event at Kyler Park and the police department was there. He says, and I can't say enough what a great program they put on and got some good messages into those kids. And he did name a couple, Gonzalez Waring and Telly Joyner, and I'm sure there were more. I just don't have them all. But man, what, what a great compliment. That being said, real quick, I've got to get council approval for a proclamation for Denim Day for the Women's Center of North Brevard. I need somebody to make a motion.
Mayor, we have a card if you're making a motion.
Thank you. Women's Day.
I'll move. Oh, I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
All opposed?
I got some comments.
Okay, so the Denim Day proclamation for the Women's Center of North Brevard has passed. We'll put that in the, I don't know when we do that. But anyway. Okay, let's go down this way. Member Stokel?
Mayor, if I could have you extend your meeting.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Fifteen minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Move to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
Second.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Eleven fifteen. Okay.
Mine will be relatively quick. I just wanted to mention because we're seeing a lot more developments right now. If you remember back, I know when member Nelson and mayor, we got all, we were on back in two thousand sixteen, the state wasn't as strict on private property rights at that time. So we weren't having to cite the comp plan. So as we've been doing that lately, that has been a learning curve, I think, for me. So I just wanted to let you guys know. So I had staff print me out a copy and I've been going through it, which has been helpful. So when we're making motions, again, the legislative and quasi judicial, that thing, that took me a while to grasp. And I think sometimes it still can be a little confusing. Just understanding through the legislative process where we might not have to cite a policy specifically, but being familiar with the comp plan, whether or not it's compatible with surrounding areas, we have a little bit more flexibility. Definitely when it's quasi judicial, we have to be able to cite specifically. So that's something I've been going through and realizing, okay, we don't have to be maybe as strict with it, but we still do have flexibility with the legislative stuff, especially as we're getting more proposals coming before us for ordinances, land use changes, and really thinking about the vision for the city. I've been looking at the map as well and bringing that to every meeting just to see our conservation areas. When we're talking about, we're having a lot of housing, multifamily, and now looking at, okay, where do we need potentially commercial and what does that look like? So I just wanted to bring that to your attention since I can't tell you guys outside of the public meeting. That's all I have.
I think we all need one of those.
That sounds, it's very helpful.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Can we?
We'll go there. Vice Mayor.
I've just been sitting and listening and trying to figure out, triggered it all out. And I've been reading a lot of that as well and trying to get, you know, what ordinance go with, what, what ruling? So, but other than that, the Boys and Girls Club, congratulations.
Kids are fun.
Yeah, it is, it's a good thing. It is one of the best things that has happened in that area.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Over the years. And.
Agreed.
That's, that's all. I don't think I, I think the last thing I did was with Sarah Monday ago.
Member Nelson?
Couple of things. We went to the opening or the celebration for the Osprey plant.
Yes, we did.
And Virginia Barker did a presentation. And I put this on Facebook, let me back on. So.
You were kicked off?
I couldn't remember my password. I was, yeah.
It wasn't that complicated.
It wasn't. Well, yeah, it wasn't that complicated. But I was very impressed. She showed us a thermometer and it showed, I hope you guys can see it.
Right.
And it shows where we are now in reducing nitrogen phosphorus. And then a light blue line showing where we will be when the current projects are done. And that's way up here. So, yeah, I was just, I was ecstatic. I was even more ecstatic when she started talking about the number of projects that were complete. And there were eleven Titusville projects. The City of Cocoa had three.
Rockledge one.
Rockledge one. So I felt like, wow, you know, I think staff has really heard when we said, you know, we need infrastructure projects. I think they heard it loud and clear and they've done a wonderful job. Second, Community of Hope is Friday painting a house on Brown Avenue. So, Mr. Joe, if you want to put your paint clothes on, they'll be out there at nine. And those are affordable housing units. And so that will be the end of it. Hopefully, a couple of weeks from now, people will be moving in. And Saturday, Keeper of Our Beautiful is doing a trash bash. And you can sign up through Keeper of Our Beautiful. And we're meeting at Sandpoint Park.
Because I had a wonderful time, but I'll be out of state.
Mr. Mayor, say something in addition to.
What?
Was she just, you?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yes.
Joe, we'll need you to get closer to the mic.
That presentation was done. And, and I just told the city mayor, I had Rotary the other day and I played the city mayor and someone asked, where can you find all of the information about Titusville? And I say, all you had to do is go to our website. And, and all of that, and I concur and agree that as the county representative was doing his presentation. Everything is up here in Titusville. We're doing more than everyone else in the county. And thank you for bringing that.
Yeah, and I'm gonna add something. I wanted to add the same thing. And thank you for bringing that up. But they'll come up a lot of times, I do believe. But projects, project delivery partnerships, this is not our, ours. This is the Lagoon people who are telling us this. Satellite Beach One, Rockledge One, Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency One, Indian Atlantic One, Cape Canaveral One, West Melbourne Two, Palm Bay Two. Basically, you add Indian Harbor Beach Two. You add all theirs up together and they just barely equal us. City of Cocoa Three, Melbourne Four. We're ahead of the Brevard Zoo. We are number one in the county on projects. Now, I'll just leave it at that. But for those that really care about the lagoon and that's what they care about, they gotta be proud that that's where we're at. You're not number three, we're not number five, we're not number eleven, we're number one. Go ahead. Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm done. I'm done.
I'm not. I'm not. Herman's on a rant today. I wanna, and, and I don't know how many people are aware of what happened at the T E C board meeting on March fifteenth. And, you know, T E C is a, is an advisory board to our council. And as such, they make recommendations to us. We take those recommendations very seriously. But our, and, and we vote for what we think is in the best interest of the fifty-some-odd people we have in Titus, huh?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty, fifty thousand some odd people, yeah. But what disturbed me about the board, how the board attacked our staff members and city council during their meeting. I don't know why there was such anger and, and verbal abuse of us and the staff that supports us. And I think this kind of behavior on a committee that we appoint is totally unacceptable. I don't believe that our professional planning staff should ever be exposed to such an environment from, from an advisory committee appointed by us in the future. I think that, you know, if I was in their position, I probably would want to quit. They should not have to put up with this ridiculous and, and unwanted behavior. I believe the council should put T E C on notice now that this will not ever happen again in future meetings, period. If the T E C cannot comply with this simple request to treat our staff with dignity and respect that is due them and due every human being, they should be removed from this committee.
I don't disagree with the concern greatly. I'm not sure throwing it out here at this time is the best thing to do without creating more of this. And that being said, I totally agree with you. I've talked to city manager and I do think that there is communication that needs to take place between the people or the person who leads that group. But I think that that's the way to handle this at this point. And certainly, I don't think city manager is interested in sending his staff to meetings where they were abused in the way you mentioned. So I'll leave it at that. City manager?
I have no action items and just some informational items and dates of events upcoming, subject to your questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions? I see none. No, I don't. I guess I do see one. Are you ready?
Yeah, Richard's got a couple items.
Okay, Rich, I mean, city attorney?
First item is the acquisition of Sun Valley Lots. You previously approved utilizing funds to purchase some of the Sun Valley Lots that were under a tax deed sale to allow us to protect our wellfields. And so in there's an update on the acquisition of those lots, letting you know that we were able to purchase four of those lots utilizing that money. No action necessary. That's just an update.
Sixteen B settlement pending claim. We have a claim. It was a, a car accident involving a rear-end collision with one of our officers. The, the plaintiff's alleged injuries were neck, low back. Medical bills exceeding fifty-four thousand dollars. Based on the facts, our defense counsel has recommended resolving this case in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. No admission of liability. And there will be plaintiff for release, all parties. So based on the recommendation of defense counsel and risk manager, we're seeking counsel to approve settling this case in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars and authorize city manager and defense counsel to execute all applicable settlement documents.
Thank you. City clerk, have any cards?
Yes, one Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I've, I'm, I'm disapproving of this because I need, you think you need more information. I've been through court a number of times. There's a settlement and then there's, there's probably court fees too. And there's probably paying attorney fees to the other, of the, of the, of Mr. Edwards. So I'm asking for what is the real amount, total amount it's costing the city? So there's, there's a cost of our attorneys, there's a cost of probably their attorneys, there's probably court costs plus the forty-five thousand. That's what I believe this is saying. I'm, I could be corrected on that, maybe, Mr., Mr.?
Forty-five thousand dollars. It's self-insured retention of twenty-five. So I think it ends up costing the city twenty-five. But the total settlement, it's a personal injury case, is forty-five thousand dollars.
So I think the twenty-five thousand was what? I'm not sure.
A self-resure insured retention amount and above that, insurance kicks in. But I'm coming to you because anything over that twenty-five requires you to agree to settle. The total settlement is forty-five thousand dollars.
Plus, we have to pay the twenty-five thousand probably in our insurance, for insurance or something like that.
That's the exposure of the city. The total settlement is forty-five thousand dollars.
I never did understand that. But anyhow, I, I just think of the settlement that, that Edwards is going to receive is, is forty-five thousand. Is that correct? Okay, so, so we probably have, we have to pay something extra in addition to that. And, and I also am concerned is that because I, is that this, I've been warned by some attorneys that don't mess with the city because the city has a, an unending source, resource of legal that they can spend millions and millions of dollars and do all kinds of damage to someone who's suing the city and, and extend it and so forth. So I'm just mentioning that because this unlimited resource for defense funds should be, should be shown on our balance sheet as how we are spending it to other attorneys and so forth. And I don't believe it is. For example, I think there was a one million dollar settlement one time that I don't, I don't, never saw it on the, on the, on any budget or finance statement. So I think that you should reveal what the city is expending on its legal fees and so forth, that that should be somehow accountable in the financial report. And as to my knowledge, I don't believe it is. But I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Anything else, city attorney? City manager?
I need a motion to approve that settlement.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the settlement of the claim of Edwards versus the City of Titusville and authorize defense counsel, city manager, or designee to execute the necessary settlement documents.
Got a motion. I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Good to go.
We good?
Yes, sir.
Meeting dismissed. Meeting adjourned.